Welcome, everybody. Let's please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a packed agenda tonight. We'll do our best to get through it as quickly as we can. But I expect it to be a pretty late meeting. So with that said, roll call. All board members are present. And I'm looking for... We're away from our board docs tonight, thanks to a little software glitch and back to our paper. And it's hard to get back to that methodology. So forgive us if we're a little disjointed. Presentations, recognitions, awards. Mrs. Fiola?
Excuse me, Dr. Short. Can you put a chair for Dominique? They forgot for... Come on up here. We forgot Dominique tonight. Thank you. He just came in. We wanted to start this evening with just a couple of recognitions. And our first recognition, we've been trying to organize for a little while, and that's Ms. Christina Kleinfelter. And I'm going to ask Dr. Dave Ramech to come up and just say a few words about Christine. And we have a certificate of recognition for her.
I failed to bring my sunglasses, so I apologize. But I am happy to come and talk to you a little bit about Mrs. Kleinfelter. She is receiving the Montgomery County Counselors Association Counselor of the Year Award. And you know, as we're seeing more and more kids arriving, particularly in the middle years, if you think back to the middle school, apart from the academic challenges, it can also be some very trying times for all of our students in that age bracket moving through adolescence. So I appreciate the way Christina is really not only connected with our kids, but really been a force throughout the community to support families and help kids both academically as well as their social-emotional learning. And she's really a role model for us on the staff to keep that moving. So I'm very glad we're able to recognize her at the board level tonight.
Congratulations to have the board. We actually have one of our retirees with us tonight, Mr. Kenton McGlone. Kenton joined the Pots Grove School District in 1983. He taught art at the middle school until, I think he got transferred to the high school. But he sure did a nice job at the high school also. And in addition to his duties as an art teacher, Kenton was the seventh grade football coach for many years. When asked what he's looking forward to with his retirement, he said drawing, painting, ceramics, jamming on a guitar, and travel. So I guess he's not getting away from his art. So congratulations to Mr. Kenton McGlone if you could come up and accept your gift. Unfortunately, they couldn't be with us, but I would like to read a little bit about each one. Carol Thompson came to Pots Grove in 2005 after she taught many years in the Chester-Upland School District. She's had the opportunity to work with students in both the middle school and the high school as our ESL or English as a Second Language teacher. She's looking forward to reading, traveling, and spending time with her beautiful grandchildren. So congratulations to Carol. And our last retiree, I'm kind of glad she's not here tonight because Ms. Fiola would be getting emotional here because Mrs. Kathy Williams has done a phenomenal job for this district. She's been with us since 1982. She's worked with students at many grade levels. After an elementary music teacher, she moved to the middle school in 2009. She served as the district music coordinator as well as the elementary and middle school band director. She looks forward to being able to play with her French horn in the bands and orchestras instead of conducting. And just a little aside for the board, when I was Assistant Superintendent, we needed to shift our leadership in the music department. And we really were looking to try to bring our music department together and have them work collaboratively and work smarter instead of harder. And I asked Kathy to take... to consider taking this leadership position, which she accepted. And she's just turned our music program around. So I can't thank her enough for that. So congratulations. Our last recognition this evening is that on behalf of the board, we would like to recognize you, Dominique, for your hard work and dedication this year. And we wish you the best of luck moving forward in your high school career and beyond. And we're very proud of the work that you've done. So thank you.
We have one person who put in a slip, John Rossi. Nice to see you again, John.
Thank you. I just want to say congratulations to all the retirees first, especially Mr. McGlone. He was very instrumental in molding my daughter. I have a piece of artwork hanging up my office that she did in his class. Dominique, I know, I'm positive, you're a bright, talented young man. And I'm sure we'll be hearing about you and from you in the future. So it was a pleasure serving on the board with you. Thank you. The reason I'm here is when I was first appointed to the board, when I was first appointed to the board, I was asked a question by the board that was sitting at the time, and some of you that are still here, about what I thought about social media and the school board. And as you all remember, I wasn't for it. I mean, I voiced my opinion. I said I didn't, you know, think it was the proper thing. And after what everything had happened, I'm not picking on anybody by any means. I'm not picking on anybody on the board or administration or anything. I would love to see the district step away from Facebook. We have so many ways to communicate. We have... Everybody on the board has an email. All the administrators have emails. The school has phones and emails. And we have the Mr. Tellus with his recording on TV. And you can stream it on your computers, your smartphone, or what have you. I just feel that lately, the whole concept with the Facebook and the discussion groups and everything has really fell out of what it's meant... what it has meant to be, for whatever reason. And I see a lot of things on there that I don't like reading. And I don't think it puts us in a good light. So I would really like us to reconsider, the district to reconsider, or the board to reconsider, using Facebook as a way for the board to communicate because I think it doesn't make things clear. I don't think that people understand what, as for instance, the discussion group pages were, as we've seen lately. People don't understand. There's, without a better term, there's mudslinging, there's name-calling, there's things. And then, you know, it has to be administrated, and it has to be supervised. And the person who does that is the person who did the page, and I think justly so. And I don't think people understand, they get their feelings hurt or what have you. I don't think we need to get mired up into that. And that's my opinion now, being on this side again, that I think we should step away from that and go back to how we used to communicate. And that's just my opinion. I have no other people to tell me. I just me. So thank you.
So John, I appreciate those comments. Certainly, I'm right in the middle of this discussion, which has been coming from different quarters. I will tell you that it's been my plan to formulate my own thoughts about this subject in as cogent and coherent a written form as I can. But it was also my plan to wait until we get past graduation and the budget before I did that because I really didn't want to distract any further from that. So I appreciate your comments. I do have a lot of thoughts on the subject. And I appreciate hearing from you, as always. Any other public comment before we move on? I need to announce that an executive session will be held immediately following the regular board meeting to discuss negotiations with the Teamsters. And now, moving on to approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the... Why don't we lump them together if everybody's okay? The special meetings from five... the special meeting from 5:4 and 5:2, the approval of the monthly board action minutes, and 5:3, the monthly board workshop minutes?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? What's that? Motion carries eight, nothing, and an abstention. And now, we'll move to receiving of the accounts for audit.
I move that we accept the high school accounts, middle school accounts, and cafeteria accounts as presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing.
I move that we approve the payment of invoices in the amount of $4,323,824.68 from May 2016 as presented.
Second. Motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing.
I move that we approve the treasurer's report for May 2016 as presented and file it for audit.
Second. Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing. Moving on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. And we're going to hear our last student board representative report from Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, everyone. The high school last week had senior award... had their senior award ceremony along with senior finals. And the Booster Club hosted their banquet honoring student athletes. This week is graduation on Wednesday at 6:00 p.m. Middle school, last week, they completed eighth grade finals and collected their iPads. Students completed final assignments and reflected on their academic goals set in the beginning of the year. This week, they will celebrate academic achievement... academic achievements of the middle school students with an award ceremony and mark the transition of eighth graders to the start of their high school careers. Lower Pots Grove Elementary, students are enjoying participating in year-ending activities and receiving recognition for their hard work via award ceremonies. West Pots Grove Elementary, last week, they welcomed the senior class and celebrated their accomplishments. They loved making signs for them and high-fiving them as they walked through the playground during field day. They celebrated the end of the year with their yearly awards program, and the third trimester's Good Citizen Luncheon was also held. This week, they will participate in first Learning Colonial Games and then playing them, along with watermelon math, special reading activities, and finishing up schoolwork. They are... they have grown a lot this year and look forward to the new challenges awaiting them next year. Ring of Rocks Elementary, the staff hosted a volunteer breakfast to show appreciation to the volunteers who helped teachers and students throughout the school year. Each grade level went on a field... went on a field trip and picnic. Students celebrated the 2016 graduates during the Senior Walk, and they were inspired to work hard in order to one day earn their high school diplomas. Teachers shared their professional learning from the year during differentiated supervision showcases. End-of-the-year data meetings were held, and they celebrated tremendous growth of their students. And that concludes the board report.
Thank you, Tom. I wanted to just echo one of the events that you mentioned, which was the eighth-grade award slash graduation ceremony at the middle school. I had the pleasure of attending that since my own son was there. And I also was present at the fifth-grade award ceremony. And I just want to thank the principals of both schools and all the teachers who put on such a wonderful show for the... show isn't the right word. Presentation for the parents and the students. And I just have to say how impressive both of those classes are. It was just amazing to see how many accomplishments there were to celebrate in both of these grades. And I'm sure it's not any different in the in-between years, but Pots Grove has an amazing group of students, and we have a lot to be proud of here. And since I got to witness both of these, I just thought I would give a shout-out since you mentioned it. So thank you again for your service. We really appreciate it. And we wish you all the best in your next endeavor, which I'm sure you're going to just knock it out of the park.
Moving on to discussion items, our first order of business was to bring back to you a presentation about the math program quality review. So I'll ask Mr. Voorhees, and I think he has a couple of other people coming up to speak with you this evening.
So what I wanted to do this evening was briefly, or at least hopefully briefly, get through some of the pieces from the findings within the math program quality review. As we did that, I wanted to talk about a couple of pieces. So my first slide is really looking at a puzzle because this is just one piece of data. As you know, we have many pieces of data, and our goal is to kind of piece together all those pieces and figure out how does this one piece of data fit in with all the other pieces of data? So we have student achievement data, we have PSSA data, we have information now from the program quality review. All those come together to... Our job is to put all that together in a meaningful way so that students have a meaningful progression of learning here in Pots Grove related to their math education. This slide is just of a picture of a New York City street. And if you could see it a bit more clearly, if you didn't have sunglasses on, you would see that there's multiple people all going in various directions. But they all hopefully have one very common goal, and that's for them to become productive citizens. At that particular moment in time, they might have very particular goals. That could include finding dinner, getting to a job interview, finding their next appointment. But hopefully, they all have a common goal of becoming productive citizens or continuing their role in being a productive citizen. We, as a school district, have a very similar goal, only our goal is not to create a product, but we are creating students who are prepared to be productive citizens. Okay? And I'm going to come back to that in just a bit. So what is it that we set out to do with this math program quality review? As you know, we had student achievement data that we were all, I think, agreed that we hoped would be at higher levels. We also know that the PSSA tests have changed over time, the standards have changed over time. So our goal was to say, how can we take a very comprehensive look at the education our students receive here in Pots Grove related to math and utilize that information to help us move forward? Okay? So with the help of the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit and two other school districts in Montgomery County, we sat together and we said, well, let's get the information back around five critical areas. So that included curriculum alignment, instruction, materials and resources, communication, and professional development. And as I talk about each of those in a bit, I'll define what each of those really mean because they overlap, but they are... we're going to pull them apart for our own internal pieces. How do we collect all this information related to that? There were parent surveys, there were focus groups with administrators, with teachers, and there were over 70 classroom observations that occurred K through 12. So that teams of teachers from other school districts and the intermediate unit were walking into our classrooms and getting a feel for what construction curriculum looks like in action here in Pots Grove. So part of this was really creating a collaborative environment. So we had a team, and you can see these folks' names listed here. Some of them are in transit. They've emailed me. And they were... their goal was to talk about this process a bit in terms of what did it look like in Methacton and Perkyomen Valley, who also participated in a very similar process. But the goal was that each district was set up... followed the exact same process. They had focus groups, they had surveys, they had classroom observations. And that process was meant to be collaborative so that we can learn from various school systems within the county. What was the overall purpose? What's our overall goal? To have in our hands a comprehensive document which will help guide our decision-making in the future regarding mathematics programming. That's it, by and large. So coming back to my analogy of a city, this picture's a bit different. And again, if you could see it a bit more clearly, what you notice is it's a very intricate set of roadways. And that's been designed very strategically so that people living within the city were able to move very quickly from one place to another. But on any given day in that city, and you probably have experienced this, perhaps on 422, there could be road closures, there could be buildings, there could be emergencies, any number of things could affect that very intricate system. Very similar to a school district. On any given day, we always have that final goal of creating productive citizens. But on any given day, there are a whole number of various things going on, which means we're responding to different things at different times, providing different levels of attention to different things at different time. What does that mean? It means sometimes we're focused on English, sometimes we're focused on language arts, sometimes we're focused on math. And it's not that we're looking at those in isolated views, it's we're strategically planning out what the overall implementation looks like and providing professional development and parent communication for each of those pieces. So before I go into the actual findings from tonight, I just wanted to bring you back to these mathematical practices. There are eight mathematical practices, and as you read through these, some of them are ... you're going to say, well, yeah, we've done that forever. So for example, looking at number five, use appropriate tools strategically. We've always had tools in math. When I was sat in a math classroom in kindergarten and first grade, I had the little blocks in front of me so that I could count things out. Then I had calculators and graphing calculators. We've always used tools. Something that I didn't always have the opportunity to do, though, was really constructing arguments or critiquing another student's work so that we're sitting around a table and saying, how did you get to that answer? Tell me about your thinking. How did you reason to get to that particular piece? So these are not related to any one particular material or set of resources that we use, but rather, these are helping students really create meaning for an understanding of the content as well as the process through which they understand math. So let's talk briefly about each of the findings in each of these key critical areas. We're going to start with curriculum alignment. And as we look at curriculum alignment, I just wanted to find for you what that really means. As we're talking about that, we're really talking about the district's own developed documentation, our own written plans, unit plans, that our teachers have worked around the table to say when and how are teachers being introduced... are students being introduced to skills and concepts. So as we talk about curriculum alignment, that's what I'm referring to today. As we looked at those particular things and through the IU's help and Methacton's help and Perkyomen Valley's help, we found that we have some strengths across the district. We found we have some areas of need across the district. Some of those could be at various levels. So it could be a strength at an elementary level and a need at the middle level. It could be noted as a strength at one level, but noted as an area of need for this... for the K-12 because we have to look at system-wide implementation, K through 12. And what the IU did for us is break it down for each level so they can tell us, K-12, is it in place? What does it look like? What does this look like for elementary? What does it look like for middle? And what does it look like for the high school? And each of them has some very... various pieces. So you can see up there some of the things I included, but some of the things to note here are there's been ongoing curriculum writing that has occurred. Why? There's ongoing standards that shift. We have changing student needs. The PSSA test itself has changed. The keystones change from time to time. And given all that information that we have, we are constantly in a state of revision to make sure that students are introduced to the concepts over time as they need to be. Particularly this year, teachers spent a lot of time really digging into what is the formatting of questions they may run into? How is the content displayed in there? What is the level of rigor of each of those? And then they looked at any resources that they have, or they looked at their curriculum documents, and they said, is that captured in my lesson plan? And if it's not, what are the ways in which I can do a better job making sure that is in fact included? So what are some strengths related to curriculum alignment here in Pots Grove? There's an established culture for curriculum revision that makes teachers understand we need to continually look at our curriculum so that it's meaningful for them and, more importantly, meaningful for the students. As we look at areas of need, one thing that really came out K through 12 is paying more particular attention to what it looks like for students, for all students, but particularly student... our students with IEPs. Why is that the case? It doesn't mean special education teachers aren't working incredibly hard. They are working. In fact, they're working very hard. But what happens is they're so dedicated to making sure that students achieve in any way, shape, or form, that they find whatever they can to make that work, but that leads to some inconsistency across the board. So we have to do a better job of defining what is the core, what we call the core, what every child is getting here in Pots Grove. What does that look like for students, for all students, so that all students have equal access to that particular piece? Another finding was really, we've spent a lot of time looking at the standards and pulling out skills and concepts. Teachers are really understanding in the review notes and area to really look at the eligible content because that really defines for us what is going to be included on the test. So they said, we need to do a better job of including that eligible content on our documents so that teachers are quickly able to access that material. The next area is instruction. So when I'm talking about instruction, I'm really talking about a couple of things. Number one, what is instructional practice of what strategies are teachers using in the classroom to help students gain understanding? And the second piece is, how are they using data to provide appropriate interventions and/or enrichment opportunities for students? So when I'm talking instruction, those are the pieces that I'm referring to for areas of strength as well as areas for growth. Our teachers in an area of strength is really looking at... teachers are analyzing student thinking. What does that mean? It means they're looking at what every child is doing in order to solve a math problem, and they're saying, if they got the correct answer, great. If they did not get the correct answer, it's not just looking to the bottom line and saying, no, that answer's correct, but they're reflecting upon it and they're saying, where in the mathematical concept did they fall apart? Where did they have a misconception? And what can I do instructionally to help the student better understand that piece? So that's a strength that's in place. As we look at areas of need, again, the idea of providing consistent instructional practices here was a large key. There's extensive and intensive professional learning community support that needs to go along with us so that they're looking at the data that they have about each of their students and making sure that they can do something with it, and making sure that the data pieces we have in place is informing the teacher and the student and the parent so that everybody's clear about this is where my child is relative to his or her mathematical Let's talk materials and resources because this is probably the one, when we say curriculum, most people think materials and resources. These are those purchased materials that we utilize. So in our case, Everyday Mathematics, Connected Math, Carnegie, they're programs that we purchase from a publisher, and they're utilized as tools or almost a vehicle through which we're going to teach some of the content. Okay? Okay? So that's what I'm referring to when I'm talking materials and resources. In Pots Grove, before I go into this particular piece, and I'll just share my personal opinion, but I think it's a shared opinion, we believe teachers make the difference, not programs. It's the teacher's use of instructional data, it's how the teacher decides, what are the ways in which I can help students understand this? Now, that's not to say programs aren't important, and we choose programs if they're research-based and they're proven to have effective results when paired with a very effective teacher. Okay? So teachers make the difference, not programs. However, we need to make sure that we're looking and utilizing those materials and resources that are most effective and proven. So what are some strengths here in the district? It was noted that at the middle school and the high school, our materials and resources that we're using are PA core aligned. Notice I didn't say common core aligned, I said PA core. They directly align back to our state standards. Okay? At the elementary level, an area of need is they are not PA, and I think we've had this conversation at a previous meeting, they are not PA core aligned. So that's something that we need to work on in terms of an area for growth there. An area of strength is teachers have really analyzed the information that they have. So this year, we had data review binders. I believe we talked about them at a, at least one committee meeting during which teachers are really looking at, what is the amount of time that particular standard will come up on an assessment? The state informs us, you're going to have 19% of this particular standard, and that'll make up 19% of the PSSA score. So teachers looked at that, and then they said, well, where are the standards in there? What is it that students need to know about that? Where does it show up in the resources I have? And if it doesn't show up, what are we going to do together as a team? So there's a definite, what happens here is there's an absolute dedication to finding supplemental materials, which is what good teachers do. They don't rely entirely on any one program. They say, how am I going to help my student get there? How am I going to help these students get there? Okay? So that was another strength that was noted particularly at the elementary level. Professional development. I don't think I have to define this one. Pretty self-explanatory, right? However, the results were interesting. We've had very extensive and intensive professional learning for our teachers at the middle school and the high school, for our math teachers at those levels, really focusing on not only the programs that they're using, but also on the instructional strategies, those math practices. They've had intensive coaching where a coach comes into the classroom and works with them and provides them information and feedback. They utilize our own internal coaches here in Pots Grove. So there's been a lot of support in their ongoing learning about not only the practice, or the, the practices in terms of how they're teaching it, but also in terms of the resources that they use. Throughout this time, we've utilized those coaches to create plans. So we have pretty significant professional learning plans that date back to last year and probably beyond, and we have ones created for next year already. And actually, this report came at a great time because as we were finalizing those plans, we found a lot of similarities in the support we were trying to provide there. What is it that teachers said as they were in focus groups with the IU? One thing that came up is we've had a lot of attention paid to instructional practices, but they love content. Math teachers love, well, any content area teacher loves their content as much as they love their students. They probably love their students a little bit more. But as they're looking at the content, they're saying, hey, let's come back to that, let's talk about the standards, and let's talk, not that we don't understand the standards, but really, let's dig into what does that mean in terms of student performance? What do kids need to show me that they're able to do? And, and how do we take that content apart? So that was one particular area that was an area of need in really providing that content-specific professional development. At the elementary level, you may or may not know that in undergraduate programs, teachers have a whole lot of reading, teaching reading kind of courses. In my undergraduate, I may have had one, maybe two, teaching mathematics kind of courses. So oftentimes, teachers are entering the elementary grades already a little bit further ahead in terms of their understanding of reading or English Language Arts as compared to math. So we need to not only provide them with more resources so that they understand the strategies through which to teach math, but also helping them to better understand the And then the final area that we really looked at was communication. And a number of things came out here in terms of what does this really look like? And as I'm talking communication, it's important to note that this is communication relative to mathematics programming, mathematics communication, sharing progress of students through mathematically, excuse me. So as we looked at those particular pieces, we noted a couple of things. We've had a lot of success in our elementary buildings in having math nights and ELA nights and huge, many families come out because they're excited to learn about their kids, they're new, it's fresh, the school is a fresh setting. As you might expect, as you go up in the levels, attendance at those begins to wane unless we can find a way to pair it up with something else that's really occurring within the building that students are engaged in. What happens as a result is parents, myself included, I'm talking as a parent now for the moment, we don't always necessarily understand what it is the standards say because math instruction does look different today than it used to look, and that's not just because of the way in which we teach it, but also the content that we need to teach. But we also don't understand why there are certain ways in which the, the teaching is occurring. So we need to find a better way as a district to make sure those communications occur with parents of K through 12 students so that they understand, what does the continuum of math look like here in Pots Grove? What does it look like for my particular student this year in whatever grade he or she is? Where is he or she right now? And what's the expectation by the time they leave this grade level or by the time they leave Pots Grove? As I said a bit earlier, this is just a screenshot of one particular plan that's in place. I don't know if this is included on your particular piece, but this is really just one piece that at the middle school level, for example, and we did this at the high school, where we established goals and action plans after we worked with our teachers and an external coach worked with our teachers. And we said, where are the areas that we want to improve in terms of instructional strategies, in terms of content? That's one example. But as I said, there's extensive professional development plans also in place that we've had in place. We'll continue that support as teachers continue to learn about math instruction. So where do we go from here? After all the questions that we go through? In the, the past day or so, I've met with just about every building and all staff. Today, I spent time with the middle school math department and the high school math department, and although I didn't share the, the report in its entirety because they have a lot of other things going on right now, I did share with them some highlights so that they were familiar with, here's some information we got back. Over the summer, we always have folks coming in with a very strategic list of some curriculum writing tasks that need to be accomplished. Teachers kind of keep note throughout the year in terms of, this worked really well, this lesson worked great, oops, we need to rearrange this pacing because maybe I introduced something before students were ready, or this other lesson would have helped that. So they're constantly engaging in that, and that will begin occurring as early as next week where teachers engage again in that curriculum revision process to re-piece and determine where we go from here. Since one of the findings was, we need to look at our materials and resources at the elementary level, that is something that we will begin to look at over the summer, moving right into next year to say, what are materials and resources that are out there that can support our ongoing efforts? That could be an updated version of Everyday Math, it could be an entirely different program or resource. What we need to do is look at, again, the curriculum that we've laid out per the PA standards and say, which materials and resources are going to best support that particular need?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that last sentence? Because I've been waiting and waiting and waiting to hear the term Everyday Math. So can you just, I want to make sure I heard what you said about it. Can you repeat that, please?
I, I'm going to try to repeat it, but I might not get it exactly. Can you play that back on the video?
He said, he said that it could be an updated version of Everyday Math or some other materials and resources.
So let me go back to, one of the findings within the, the document under materials and resources are that our materials and resources at the elementary level are not PA core aligned. So what does that mean? We need to go, we need to examine the materials and resources based upon PA core standards, based upon the curriculum documents we have in place and determine which are the best resources to help our students meet what they might need. Now, I'm simply putting out there, our job is to find the best materials and resources, again, to pair with an effective teacher. Could that be an updated version of EDM, Everyday Math, excuse me? Yes, it could. I'm just saying it could be. Could it be something entirely different? Yes, it could be. And that is a decision that I don't think anybody's prepared to make. That requires teachers sitting around, having conversations, that involves parent communication and ongoing looking at, how do we best get there?
Daniel, I, I think that you're likely to get a fairly emotional response from some of us on this one. And, and, and the reason is really, while in my own case, I wasn't sitting here, I was sitting there when the decision was made to get an updated version of Everyday Math to the tune of approximately $400,000 to my recollection, give or take a few dollars, based on the assurance that it was aligned with the standards that were coming. So, so from my perspective, EDM is a non-starter. They, they sold us a bill of goods and I want a refund rather than going and, and saying, let's buy more. Now, that's my emotional response, and I'm admitting that it is that, but I don't think that it's going to be a unique one given those circumstances. So I understand where you're coming from. You're trying to stay objective. That's, that's your job. My job is to try and be objective, but when it comes to EDM, it's not easy. So I didn't mean to interrupt, but, but.
Perfectly fine.
Wanted to sort of head off, you know, or at least preface what might come from others. Bill, I think you have something you want to say.
I would second those comments, but also add, so you're telling us that it's taken all year to produce this, and we have not sat and decided formally, is EDM working? It's taken all year to do this? I'm a little irked, but I'll let you continue.
Well, Mr. Parker, I don't, I don't want Daniel to take the brunt of being beat up here. I mean, the IU, we were talking about this in the fall, and we talked with other districts that were having similar feelings or had similar questions that they wanted answered. The IU indicated that they'd be willing to partner in a collaborative effort, which is what we ended up doing. And through their guidance, we went through this process, which really didn't kick off until February maybe. So between February and May, you know, that, that was the point that, that this kicked off. And it's this document, it's not the PowerPoint. Daniel just pulled some, some PowerPoint, so. But also remember that in the interim, Daniel's worked very hard last summer, you know, with, with our leadership team, our cabinet, in trying to come up with other strategies that we feel have been quite effective in terms of putting those data binders together, going back and revisiting the steps for PLC and what teachers should do and how they should converse together to talk about, you know, what, what's working, what's not working, what's aligned, what's not aligned, making adjustments to their curriculum that they are teaching, bringing in those outside coaches, which we talked with you about at the Curriculum Technologies and Student Affairs Committee, and provided you that information, having them do that, that alongside coaching. So all of those things are going along throughout the course of this year. We feel like we've made quite a bit of progress in terms of what we were able to do with that. But you also wanted an objective outside view, which is why we entertained this, and we were trying to work collaboratively with other school districts that were having the same issues or at least the same conversations that we were.
I appreciate those comments, and I know you meant I as in the board wanted outside view. I personally did not. To me, it's pretty clear, but so be it. My concern and my problem is, if we have a program that is not adequate, is not working, a program, a curriculum, whatever you want to call EDM, then I don't think it's fair to the students or staff, because that's what we're sticking them with, to continue for three, four years, let's study this up this side and down the other, and let's look at it this way. If it's not working, let's change it because that's a whole year, students are stuck with the program. I get here in the meantime trying to, you know, do things to spice it up basically, but we need to not delay or drag our feet. If we have a program we know is not working, now we spend however many months doing it, maybe it's coming and I'm, I'm interrupting, but I want to hear the timeline, and I hope it's not another year to examine this, then a year to do this. Our students, every year they lose is a year lost.
But I think the one point that we want to make here is that not all teachers are saying, let's throw Everyday Math out. What they're saying is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Daniel, but we're recognizing that there's some pieces that aren't aligned, but through our conversation, if we, you know, move some things around and we identify where we have gaps, and then we look at some outside resources to support those gaps, that might be effective, just as effective as throwing the whole thing out and starting all over again and having, you know, all of the learning curve for professional development to implement it in a huge program and spend another $400,000. So we want to be very careful in not, you know, just moving too quickly that we're, that we're spending money for, for not, but we also want to recognize, as you said, that obviously students are, are, you know, first and foremost on our mind, but through these data team process and through the conversations that they're having, they are making adjustments to what's being taught because remember, Everyday Math is a resource. So we can make, we can pull and pick and choose, and we can add, and we have added some things this year that principals have asked us to do through the teachers, and those things are, are helping with some of the gaps perhaps that we, that we see that, that we're uncovering as we go through this process.
One last comment, and I'll stop interrupting for now. EDM is a resource, yes, but it's a resource that the teachers are forced to use, and I'm not saying that in a way that, you know, we shouldn't require a program for teachers to use, but that's the reality. They're forced to use this program that works this way and this way only, in addition to what's being done to spice it up, the data teams and this and that. I just want us to put this on the fast track so we have something in place. So come the fall, these students are ready in the elementary levels, the teachers are ready to teach their students an adequate math program. That's what I'm going to be looking for, a fast track so it's ready and in place and we don't take another year to analyze.
Daniel, did you, we sort of interrupted you.
It's perfectly fine. I was just about done anyway. So in terms of next steps, as I, I, I forget where I was. I've been meeting with teachers to provide them with some highlights. We'll engage in curriculum writing. We're continuing to tear apart the standards. As soon as new data comes in, we're looking at those, no matter what resource we're using at any level, that's something we continue to do in terms of looking at our student performance, saying, how is this represented in terms of content? What is the level of rigor? What is the formatting? Because something as simple as the formatting of the, the way the question is worded is sometimes something that students need direct instruction on. So teachers will continue to work through that process so that we're able to move forward. In the, come the, the summer and the fall, teachers are really going to be pulling apart the report as well at, at the various levels to determine what is it, what, what are the implications of each of these statements that are made within the report? How do we begin to move forward acknowledging where we are within the system right now?
All right. I'm going to ask my first question, and it's going to be, in regards to the report you showed here where it said the January 2016 action planning, is that the current plan that we're going with presently? Is that the, the goal? The one I saw here that says summer 2016, then May 2017 and all that?
So one of those, the one that I had represented up here is the middle school plan. So the, what occurred is Mr. Becker and Mr., or Dr. Ramage and I and the middle school math teachers with the external coach looked at the information that we received back in terms of her going into each classroom and doing observations so that we could look like, look at what instruction looks like at the middle school. We did the same at the high school. We then sat by department teams and we, we outlined what are the ways in which we want to support. Our next check-in is when we bring that, that external coach back so that that person can do the same observations again to note what is the growth that we've made.
Okay. Then I'm going to say that the goal you have listed of the, increase the number of teachers in the proficient range by 20% in each of the following categories, and you list the categories, is completely unacceptable. I have the chart here that we received earlier, and if this chart's actually improved, I'm okay with that. But when we went through the middle school and we actually sit down and someone went through with all the teachers and seen where they were at a level, whether they were not demonstrating, up to they were explanatory, we had 0% in all 12 categories of our teachers' exemplary. We had some teachers that were not demonstrating at all in certain areas, only a few, only in the launch opener area. We had many areas that had 0% in the proficient. So to increase by 20% and have nothing listed as in we want some of our teachers to be explanatory is unacceptable to me. So I'm going to go from 33% to 40%, but 60% or below proficient, or I'm going to go from. go from, well, we got 16.7% in one category, to, okay, we'll go up to 18%, because that's expect, you know, that's acceptable then, and have let more than 80% of our teachers less than proficient. And nothing on here says that we're going to put anybody in the exemplary program, and to me, that is a goal that is just way too low.
So, I don't want to sound offensive here-
No.
-so please accept my response as being as objective as it possibly can be. As we look at what we know about where school systems are, and establishing goals, what do we know? We know this about establishing goals in our own life. We have to, number one, start with very few goals, because if we have many, many, we're not going to manage those goals. More importantly, we need to acknowledge where the system is. So, 20% sounds like a small number of teacher, small number, or small amount to move. However, we're moving back to that city street, we're moving an entire intricate system, meaning there has to be ongoing professional development at a time where the resources that teachers were using were different, the standard, and that, please do not misunderstand, I'm not creating excuses here, at a time where their standards created, at a time when all the instructional strategies that they needed to learn were all different. That occurred all simultaneously, and that's not exclusive here in Pottsgrove, so again, that's not, that's not an excuse. But it is a fact of the matter that we need to make sure, what do we know about the research in establishing goals? We have to make sure they're reasonable. So, we have to say, where is it that we can reasonably get, so that we continue on the road to growth moving forward?
I'll say-
I think the other thing that you need to consider, Mr. Leach, is, you know, we can't ram this down a teacher's throat and make it so threatening, and so scary, that they don't want to grow as a professional. We're, we're trying to work with teachers and say, "Here's, here's where you are, okay? And we're going to bring in this coaching, and we're going to help you, and we're going to help you grow and learn." That's what a learning organization is. It's not, you know, an atmosphere, we're not trying to create an atmosphere of fear, and an atmosphere of defeat, and it's not a cutthroat atmosphere, it's a learning organization. So, we want to grow our teachers, and we want them to be the best that they can be for the benefit of our students, but we want to do so in a way that's not going to fracture the culture here, and, and create an atmosphere that we're not going to really get anywhere.
And I completely agree. What I'm going to say, though, is that I'm not blaming the teachers at all, in any of this. If any, if something's off, that I think the teachers aren't exemplary, not at all. What I'm saying is that we're in the fourth year of a program, obviously, and unless I'm the only one here that sees it, in the fourth, or the third year program, next year we are a fourth year, right? Something's wrong with the way we're developing the teachers. Our side is the one that's making the mistake, not the teacher's side. The administration and the development side is the one that's not providing the proper education or development to the teachers, so they can improve. After three years, if I had an employee, after three years, and they still didn't know what I was telling them, I'm telling them something wrong. It's not them that can't figure it out after three years, it's me. I have to look at me, and I have to look at what I'm doing to develop them. What I'm saying is, our side is what's making a mistake here, in my opinion.
Mr. Leach, can you repeat what, what those numbers represent, where we got them, and what they are, as far as proficient and not proficient? Or do we have a copy?
Before you, before you do, I just want to, you know, I was present in the, at the curriculum meeting and questioned when we went over those numbers, and I think that it's important to recognize that we're talking about a segment of overall proficiency. Okay? So, so that, you know, you can, you can misrepresent what was presented to us, if you talk about 0% exemplary, because what we were talking about really was how we have implemented productive struggle, for, for lack of a better way to phrase it, and as some of you may know, I'm not exactly a fan of production, productive struggle, but the point is that, that it was, in some very targeted areas, that are certainly important and significant, as I recall, from January, it had to do with the, the way the lesson is presented, and, and the summation of the lesson, where, where there seemed to be some, some issues or difficulties. I guess I just want to point, point out that, well, first of all, I agree with you, 100%. I think our teachers are, are fabulous, and my big concern about this plan is, is when you read it, it seems like we're putting it all on them, and, and so that's a concern of mine, especially when we also are saying that materials and resources at the entire elementary level haven't been appropriately aligned. And we haven't talked about, my favorite, other favorite subject was this Cognitive Tutor, which we have an entire ninth grade class take a half a credit course, essentially pounding on the computer for the entire time, and with very little supervision from any teachers, from what I understand. And we also have the other grades using it as well. So, before I get to my little note that I have written here, from an expert user of Cognitive Tutor, I wanted to find out, are we keeping that? We think it's good?
We need to look at, so when I made the reference about EDM-
Right.
-everyday mathematics, we know that's just one part of our system. So, what we don't want to do is, no matter what decision we made regarding materials and resources at the elementary level, that needs to be made as part of a larger system. Meaning, we don't want kids jumping from one particular set of resources to another set of resources, because then you can be sure alignment will be, will not line up. So, we need to look at all the data we have, again, this is one puzzle piece, and we need to look at all that information and say, "What are the ways in which materials and resources support it?" The information we have back is the materials and resources at the secondary level, middle school and high school, are PA core aligned, as are our curriculum documents.
Okay. Well, for the sake of time, I'm not going to read the, the essay that I had my son do for me, who has been using Cognitive Tutor for three years. First question, did we consult with the students when we were looking at these materials and resources, and get their opinions, particularly that program, which is so heavily interactive with the students?
When it was purchased, years ago?
Now, since then.
I don't know that we had.
Well, I'm going to share, not, not here tonight, but I'm going to share with Shelley, and hopefully, you will see, my son's piece of expository writing on, on Cognitive Tutor. But, but from his perspective, if I were to sum it up, it's a complete and utter waste of time. And he's just one student, and certainly, we don't make decisions based on one student, although it's a very well reasoned piece of writing. And I asked him to do it, because he's been complaining to me about it all year, I'm like, "Well, could you please put it down on paper for me? What it is that, that you don't like about it?" And he does, very effectively. So, so one thing I would say is, is I have a great concern that we're using a lot of our time working on a program that may not actually be teaching our students anything, other than how to get through a computer program that is incredibly frustrating to them. And it's, I've heard from a lot of other parents about their students' issues with Cognitive Tutor, so I know it's not just my son that feels that way. And, so the reason why I asked is because, because we are expending a lot of time, it's not just that we purchased it, it's not just that our students are being graded on how they, on their use of it, as during their regular math classes, but we have this half credit course, which is supposed to prep kids for the Keystone in the ninth grade. And I would be thrilled to find evidence to the contrary of what I believe, but I tell you, in this regards, I trust the students, because they're the ones who have to use it, and they're the ones who are taking the tests. And, and I got to say, I echo Mr. Parker in, in this regards, I'm disappointed by this effort. Back in November, I, I said to you folks that I think that math is an emergency, that our, that our scores were below the state level when they previously weren't, that we're going in the wrong direction, and we spent a, not the entire year, because we waited for, for the IU to catch up. I want to be wrong. I, I want, I want to see, "Oh, we treated it like an emergency, and we're going to see a big difference." But this doesn't feel like the result of an emergency, this feels like a plotting, methodical, and systematic approach to basically keep doing the same things that we've been doing all along, just trying to figure out how to do them better. So, it feels a little bit like the definition of insanity to me, which I don't need to repeat, but just my point of view. I mean, it's too late to, to do anything but, but go into the next year along the, with the recommendations that you're suggesting. I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm just disappointed, because I was hoping for something more significant. We don't have a recommendation to replace EDM, but we say it's not doing the job. We, we haven't looked at Cognitive Tutors critically at all, even though it was last summer that I brought it up in a meeting, that, that I was very concerned, that I was hearing a lot of complaints. And now we're just going to sort of double down and keep going. So, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to pontificate this much, but, and I'm, I'm, I don't intend to, to make it seem like I'm pointing fingers, I'm just saying that our math scores last year indicated we had an emergency. Maybe they'll turn around this year, and, and I can publicly say, "I was wrong." And if so, I will be glad to do so. But I don't even know what to say, I'm speechless. Anybody else?
I just want to echo part of what Rick said, which is that I've had a concern about Cognitive Tutor, or as everyone used to call it Carnegie, and I don't know if any of you know, but Carnegie doesn't own it anymore, so we should be calling it Phoenix. Phoenix University, a for-profit company now, owns this Cognitive Tutor. That right there should be a worry. But from day one, I have yet to hear anything good about it. I have two kids who have used it, my daughter extensively, since she is now in 10th grade, she had the half-credit program last year. She also, in her math class this year, uses it within the class two, sometimes three times a week, in place of, of actual teaching. To me, that's unacceptable. That's a computer program, this is math, this is geometry, you can't have a computer teach you geometry, I'm sorry. Needs to be done by a human. You can't ask a computer a question and, and have them walk you through it. I know, as someone who struggled in geometry, once you're lost, you're done. There's hardly any turning back. So, when we start substituting a computer program that, in my opinion, is subpar, when it comes to helping the students, and when we start taking away an elective for the students in ninth grade, which technically, we are not supposed to be doing anymore, because when, when the state came out with their new guidelines for Keystone, we, we can't take away an elective anymore, in place of a Keystone prep. But now, oddly enough, Cognitive Tutor isn't for Keystone anymore, now it's just for math help. So, I, I think sort of the definition changed a little bit, because previously, it was for Keystone, and I just, I think we need to take a long, hard look at this, we're spending a lot of money on something that very few of the students feel that they're getting any benefit from. And I know neither of my own students ever said that they felt any benefit whatsoever, they felt more like it was a babysitter than something to actually help them understand math.
Again, it just seems like a natural place, while we're looking at, talking to, to stakeholders, that the students are stakeholders too, and they have feedback, that, that expert feedback, because they've actually used it, and I feel like we missed that, which is why I got one person's feedback for you, even though you didn't ask for it. And, actually, it's kind of two, because he collaborated with your son on it. So, the only thing I can say is, is I think it's a hole, and I wish we were looking at alternatives to using this one thing, that's not going to solve all of our problems, but it's a big part, it's a big part. They're using it in geometry, they're using it in algebra, they're using it in Common Core condensed in the middle school, aren't they? So, it's getting a lot of use, and, and I think it frustrates more than it teaches. And, and so, anyway, anybody else on this subject?
Mr. Vinnamitz might not be pointing fingers, but I am. I'm one voice, and if anybody disagrees, you need to speak up, because I feel this board needs to give direction. I want to be able to question, survey, whatever we decide to do, the teachers in the fall, end of September, however much time is needed to kind of get on a roll, and say, "Do you feel that you walked into this school year adequately prepared to teach this mathematical class, this mathematical program? I would like to see you take the next two months, Mr. Voorhees, and really get down and dirty, get down and dirty, and get what the teachers need in their hands." I'm not saying throw out EDM and get this new curriculum in, in two months. Whatever it is, I want to be able to go to the teachers as a board with an anonymous survey, if we need to, and say, "Hey, you had this program last year, this is a new year, where are we at? How do you feel?"
Mr. Parker, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to interject there and say-
No, then you do.
It's really inappropriate what you're doing.
You don't, you need to stop.
No, it is.
You need to stop.
No, I'm not going to stop.
No, I am speaking.
Okay, it's my turn to speak, and I'm going to let you know-
I am speaking.
-that you cannot point the finger at a director-
I am pointing the fingers, because he's a director of curriculum.
Did this board vote on a collective bargaining agreement that took away time, that took away time for teachers to, to do professional development? Yes, they did.
If we need to speak in executive session, that's what we'll do.
No, I, I'm just, I'm just pointing out that we only have so much to work with, Mr. Parker.
But we need to give direction, this board has failed for many years to give direction to the administration, and that's what we need to do.
I can't force a teacher to come on their summer vacation.
That's what we need to do.
It's not fair to them. We're, we're doing the best we can with what, with the tools we have, but you cannot point the finger at Mr. Voorhees and say, "This is his problem." And you can't expect him to fix something over the summer, when teachers are on vacation, and they don't want to come in here, even during the school year. We can't make them come after school, it's not fair to them.
I agree.
Well-
I agree, the summer, but he's had a lot more than the summer. He's had a lot more than the summer.
No, no, and he's used every minute that we had.
Next year starts a new school year, and we, they need to be prepared. Our teachers need to be ready to go.
Then you need to tell us what exactly it is you'd like us to do, because I think-
We're not the educational experts.
Well, you're not, you don't value our opinions, so it doesn't matter.
We expect administrators to be providing the programs, the training, that the staff need. Now, we're getting continuous feedback from staff, teachers, the scores, that the, we're talking about math at this point, the program is not appropriate, the program isn't meeting the needs. We've had a lot of time, our students are what matters most. We value the teachers, but our students are number one, and we can't have another year of analyzing this and analyzing that, just get them what they need to do, so that students can be productive in their math program. That's what needs to happen. Am I saying from the very beginning, "Well, you have two months to do it?" No. But now we have a whole year that's gone by, okay? A whole year.
A whole year that's gone by, and every week, we've been reporting out to you, every curriculum meeting, we've been talking about math, we brought coaches in here, we've been doing this stuff all year, we haven't been sitting on our hands until June, okay? And I thought you were part of the collaborative process, not someone who's going to shoot darts at us as we come up here every week.
This board has failed to give direction, not this board, but the, historically, the board in this district has been controlled by the superintendent, that is why I and many others ran for office, and we are here to take back control, not to make the educational decisions, because that's not our role, but to give direction, direction in the spending, the taxes that have been out of control in this district, and in, in our curriculum. What we pay in administration for the, the many different positions, it's astronomical, it's, it's, I can-
Bill, I think we need to-
We just need to get what we need in place for our kids by the fall. Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Vinnamitz.
We have a very, very long agenda for tonight, and this is just the first one, and so I really don't want to move into an exec session at this time, though I understand why you were seeking it. And in reference to the subject, I, I both agree with, I agree with Mrs. Fio, that we have been getting updates on this all along. all along. Um, I expressed my own frustration with where we are, but at the end of the day, um, uh, I, my personal opinion is that for now, we need to move forward with the plan that has been presented to us, except, um, I, I think we need to step up our consideration of alternative, uh, uh, materials where we know that they're not meeting our needs. At a very minimum, we should be doing that on behalf of our teachers because it's not their and our students. Um, because it's, because it's like, you know, going to a boxing match with one hand behind your back. Um, I, so that's why I brought up the cognitive tutor. It wasn't to point fingers. Uh, it's, uh, it's just to, to say that, uh, there, there's needed feedback that I believe wasn't collected, and, and we just need to, we just need to do better. We know we do. So, um, does anybody else have anything else on this subject before we move on?
I do.
Thank you.
And I'll be quick. Bill, um, I don't think you give direction by pointing fingers. Okay? And if you want to point a finger, you should hold up a mirror. Because if the board didn't give direction, that's not Daniel's fault, and that's not Shelley's fault. That's the board's fault. So the fingers point back this way. They did exactly what they said they were gonna do when, when, when we started this, in my opinion. And maybe the, the pace has been not to our liking, but, uh, there have been updates provided, and if we need the pace to be faster, then we need to give that direction. And what I will say is, we need to give that direction collectively. And for the way you sit up here every single meeting and, and go off on people, you will continue to be just one voice because it makes nobody want to work. Okay? It's intimidating, and it's over the top, in my opinion. If we need to point fingers, the only fingers we can point is right back at ourselves. It was a different board that sat here and gave the direction for them to go do what they did. If you didn't like it when you came in, you had since December to say something. And there have been report out since December. I'm not gonna sit here and say I'm happy with our performance or happy with this math program, but if every single meeting, everybody that reports just knows they're gonna get brow beaten, way over the top, it's unprofessional, nobody's gonna get anything done. Because what I would be doing if I was these folks is I'd be coming to, I'd be going and trying to find a way to say what I needed to say to not garner that reaction. That is not the way to make things happen. And we've all been sitting here doing it for I don't know how many meetings now. We are nine people. We need nine people to give direction. I don't even believe we need five people to give direction. We need nine people to give direction. Because if five people are given one direction and four people are given a different direction, it's still confusing to this administration. But if they're gonna come up here and get brow beaten for doing exactly what we okayed them to do, then nothing's ever gonna get done. And it is our fault. And I've said that before, and I'll keep saying it, it is our fault. So we have plenty of time to set these things on the track that we want before we get to the, the final point here where, where we're ready to take action. We've made all this time invested, and then we're saying, no, you didn't do anything that we wanted you to do. I don't believe that they didn't do anything that we want, that we wanted them to do. We told them to go do what they did here. And I give credit for taking the time to be methodical. I, while I agree that we don't have a ton of time to spare because these kids' futures are at stake, I think that they understand it just as well as we understand it, or we think we understand it. But if we do want to give direction, then you should be talking to the board, not to Shelley, not to Daniel, but to the board. Because you need five to nine people to agree with you. And it's not happening the way that this keeps getting presented. That's my opinion.
Then let's speak up a little more often. Because I get tired, I agree with the part of, that last part of what you're saying. But I'm not gonna stop raising, speaking my mind, speaking my voice. But I really totally...
You can speak your mind constructively, or you can be completely unconstructive with the way you speak your mind.
I totally agree with you that we as a board, as a board of nine, need to be giving more direction. I completely agree with that point. I do find it unacceptable that our elementary program curriculum or resources are not PA core aligned. I find that unacceptable. And I will speak that. I will speak that. I am speaking that, and I will speak that. And I do find that it is under the director of curriculum's, uh, role, I guess you say, to be making sure that our curriculum as an example is PA core aligned. Uh, uh, that's just one example. Okay? So I do agree with that. And I do get passionate when we're talking about the students, when, when, whatever it be, improper curriculum or a poor teacher, which that's not what we're saying, I'm using examples, or whatever the case is. One year, just one year is too much, you know, because the students, they only get third grade once or fourth grade once, or whatever it is. We can't dilly-dally. And you are absolutely right in that it, the direction needs to come from the full board. And I encourage every one of us to be speaking up more and giving more clarity, more direction, more, you know, accountability.
I think that, um, it would be well at this point if we remembered that everybody here, everybody in this room has a common interest in the success of our district. We come at it from all different perspectives. We come at it from all different directions. And we have different expectations as well of how fast things can happen or not happen. Um, I wasn't on the board at the time that they gave the direction on this particular study. I do know from my previous experience that oftentimes, when it comes time to present this information to the board, you struggle with, how do I present this information? What do they want to hear? Do they want to hear the 30,000-foot? Do they want to hear the weeds? Do they want to hear, you know, the big picture, the methodology? And it's a, there's a term I was gonna use, I'm not going to use. It's a guessing game, um, for a lot of times on how you're gonna present this. But what I was hearing, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that we've given them collectively, then the administration, a number of conflicting or at least direction that's intention. Um, you know, I didn't know about the collective bargaining agreement, you know, cutting the teacher days or the, the in-service days, but certainly we've, we've had a goal to keep our taxes down and keep spending down. So basically, what that tells me objectively would be that you can't throw the old system out and buy a new one because we're not gonna approve $500,000 to buy a new, a new thing. So what do you do? You put a patch on it. You come up with supplemental materials that are gonna help this thing that doesn't work fit better into the system. But you can't just, you know, magically figure them out. That does take time to look at and, and, and all of this. And, and in terms of matching with Pennsylvania Core, forgive my ignorance, but, um, I'm not a huge fan of anything that's a statewide or, much less a national core of information, because I'm not sure that all of that information is, is, is necessarily what we need. I've seen the way that Common Core is presented. I've watched several of my kids go through it on mathematics. And, um, as somebody who went through, all the way through Calculus IV in college and took all kinds of the logic programs and everything else, it seems silly to me, to be honest, a lot of the ways that they present things. And it, it's not, I've tried to figure out, well, maybe this is a, a, a cheat to help kids learn this or understand this concept, but I haven't been able to figure out what it is about Common Core that's supposedly better than the old stuff that we learned before. So I'm not necessarily sold on the core. So if I'm misaligned with some of the core things, I'm not too worried about that. Where it hurts us is on the assessments. If what we're saying is, we want our assessments to be the best assessments, that was the old complaint that we heard from teachers, well, you're teaching to the test. And they will do that. But a lot of teachers don't want to do that because they still feel like we want them to know important things that aren't being tested on the test. Okay? And how you get all that information pulled together and put in front of us in a way that says, we're doing the things you want us to do, I don't know. But I think that's what I heard.
I'm gonna jump in, uh, just, uh, one quick thing here. Um, uh, you know, as I understand the Core, as it relates to math particularly, um, the Core, teaching to the test when you're talking about, uh, teaching, uh, teaching to the standards when you're talking about math, it may be teaching to the test, but, but you, but it's not drill and skill anymore. Um, people are complaining that it's not drill and skill anymore.
I think they should.
It's, it's conceptual. Um, uh, so you can't really teach to the test with math the way, the way maybe you could have, uh, in the past, as I understand it. Because, because, because what, I mean, the whole reason we do productive struggle is, is because, because we need kids to get a more fundamental understanding of the, of the concepts than, than drill and skill provides. Um, so, uh, and I'm not trying to put a com, a, a personal commentary on it, whether, uh, uh, you know, I'm just saying that that's our reality, um, and that's everybody's reality. My only concern was that somehow, uh, you know, everybody went down on the PSSAs last year. Um, uh, you know, there's a number of reasons for that. So, but, but, but we fell below the line on the state averages, which means we felt we went down more.
More than everybody else.
Um, than, than everybody else. And that was what was concerning me personally. Um, and, and, uh, Mrs. Fiola and everybody else in the administration. Um, you know, uh, and, you know, I remember when we were talking about this last year, we were talking about, you know, well, there was a million, there's a number of permutations as to what the causes for this could be, but we need to start to try and address them. And I per, I completely agree that, uh, that it hasn't been a waste of time, what we've been doing. Um, uh, I'm just concerned about a couple of little pieces in my own case. So, um...
I think we're closer to the recommendations that everybody here was expecting than maybe this presentation made, made it out to be. I mean, I, I, the 20% improvement, I understand, I understand.
That's my only issue.
And I think that's a good issue. Um, but at the same time, going back to, how many teachers do we have across the district? And, you know, what, what is 20%? Is 20% 10, 10 teachers out of whatever in, in the middle school math? Um, you know, so we, we can do that. Um, we can make, make a proficient, we can make these improvements, and we can do those things. And yeah, the goals have to be attainable. Part of the fallacy of No Child Left Behind was that you would make infinite progress to 100%, to 100% proficient in everything, every student. And you were graded on that. Okay? As, as the years went by, you had to show average yearly progress, and that, you had to get to 100% proficient. You know, I believe in everybody's potential and all that great, um, thinking, but you're not gonna get everybody to 100% proficient, all the students. You're not going to. So it was a fallacy. So we do want to make incremental progress. We do want to make as much progress as we can, but at the same time, we don't want to set unrealistic goals either. And, you know, I always come back to wanting to understand the whys. Why are we having problems? What, what is the misalignment? Is the misalignment the fact that this teacher is in fact still using drill and kill? Because I happen to think that's a good thing. If, you know, if I've got third grade kids that know how to do math, math tables, up to 12 times 12, backwards, forwards in their heads, I don't see a harm in that. And if that is not exactly what they're testing in the PSSAs, I don't care. I would much rather have kids able to do those things, all of the kids, or the vast majority of them, be able to do that than to explain in a written, you know, two-page document how they figured out 3 plus 3 was 6. I, I, I don't put those things as equal value. I think the multiplication tables are much more important, but the PSSA is more, more focused on this written explanation of the conceptual understanding. I, you know, I'm not, it's not a blanket statement. What I'm saying is, we have to get more into the meat of it. In a, in a 15-minute or half-hour presentation, we can't get there. So, um, I think we, we should take a look at this and ha, and see if there's additional questions that we can provide to the board or provide to the staff for them to answer on a specific basis. And we can put in the questions about everyday math and say, how are we gonna supplement it? What are, what is being successful in different buildings? Because we always know that, you know, a teacher in Rock might be doing something that our teacher over in West, and this one might be having great success with it, and the ones that, where Rocks don't know about it yet. Once they find out about it, and everybody shares the asset. And I think that's what we're talking about. That's where we're going here. And if, again, if I've misstated anything, Mr. Voorhees, you know, if our, if I have a misunderstanding, please correct me. Okay? All right. So I think if we can bring up our specific comments, run them through Mr. Rabinowitz and get them to the administration, and back down to, to the staff to answer our specific questions on these, I think that would help. And if we add specific things, if you think 20 is not good enough, it, should it be 50? Should it be 40? Should it be a specific number of people? That, I think, would give them the kind of concrete direction that you need. Would that be helpful? Are we okay? All right, thanks.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else?
Yes, I do. Um, I just wanted to say something for Bill, or to Bill, just, the not elementary, being upset with not elementary not meeting the PA course. I can understand being upset about that, but at the same point, it was told to us by Mr. Voorhees because he went out looking and doing all the surveys that they presented at the curriculum meeting time after time. I mean, really extensive reports showing us all the different interviews with the teachers, with the students in certain cases, with parents, with other districts to come up with information. And one of the things they found was, apparently, the, that it does not align. But at the same point, you know, he brought that to our attention and saying, we've discovered this, you know, because everyday math, you know, you sort of assumed that it would be aligned, but apparently it was not. He's presented it to us on his own, and now giving us direction, you know, with his idea of how we can proceed so we can make it align. And so I, the point of the finger, I don't feel is right just because he's letting us know that it's not aligned and what steps he would like to see the district take in order to make it align. So I just feel that he is doing a really good job, so.
All right. Well, let's move on.
Mr. President, may I ask you a question briefly?
Sure.
First question is for Dan to ask. We haven't yet come to a decision on everyday math because, as you said, we need to review it more. Have either Methactin or Perkyomen Valley come to any decisions on everyday math? They have not. Thank you, sir. Bill, I heard you say earlier that you wanted this fixed by the start of fall. Do I interpret that to mean, Bill, at any cost?
I just want our teachers to have what they need so our students can have a productive year in mathematics.
And does that mean at any cost?
That means with the resources that we have.
All right. Moving on. Thank you. So we're gonna move to restorative practices. Um, we're not gonna have a long discussion on this. So, um, I'm actually going to summarize what Mrs. Fiola told me on the subject, um, which is that we are going to, uh, you know, continue to evaluate and provide information to the board on the subject through the summer with a goal of, of implementing sometime in the fall. Correct, Mrs. Fiola?
Um, yes. Well, what we're trying to do right now is we've collected some additional information. We met with the cabinet, met with Restorative Practices Institute to learn about various ways of putting a plan together because different school districts have done it differently. Um, we've also interviewed, um, various principals. I think we've done three, three thus far, and we had another one scheduled this week. Um, so it'll be, you know, a handful of, of good references just to better understand what they feel are the pros and cons, how they put a plan together, how they're sustaining the implementation. What we haven't had time yet is to work with our teachers and our teacher leaders to hear what they have to say on the subject. And honestly, that was part of the reason that I wanted that initial training, is to get enough people around the concept so they can understand truly what it is, so that we could articulate how that might work in Potts Grove School District. And, you know, since the board would rather us have a plan first, and I want to go back to the teachers and for us ourselves to kind of talk them through what it is, to see if they, if they can understand it that way. And, and then we can put a plan together prior to learning more about it, so we'll just do it differently because that's what you had asked us to do. So that's, that's what we're in the process of working through at this point.
Thank you, Mrs. Fiola.
Actually, I have a, I have a question.
Sure.
Maybe you can answer this. I'm not quite sure. In the, one of the sheets here, it talks about Family Power is a practical guide to using restorative practices to engage and empower families to play an active role in ensuring student success. We're, sorry, we read there rather fast, page five of (laugh) The Restoring Community in a Disconnected World. Um, I understand that, you know, there'd be instructions to teachers and/or to core teachers and spread from there, but it almost sounds like families are also taught, or do the teachers then continue on to the families? Or I was just wondering about that. Because it sounded like a great idea, just wasn't sure how.
Well, if you, if you just look at the, if you look at the hand... Well, if you, if you just look at the, if you look at the handout that says, it's from the International Institute of Restorative Practices, you know, at the top, their, their letterhead. Well, if you go down on the first page, though, and you look at private events, introduction to restorative practices, and using circles effectively, those are the first two trainings out of four. Those are two of their key concepts. And in the conversations that we've been having with the building principals and a superintendent in some different districts around this area, they really feel like those two pieces are most important for your lion's share of your staff. So understanding how to talk to students, understanding how to, you know, use circles in your classroom, get, get students around, trying to help them solve problems, bringing problems to their attention so they don't fester and end up in a fight elsewhere. Those are, those are the big things that they feel a lion's share would need. The other things, facilitating restorative conferences with families and family engagement and empowerment, probably more select group, social workers, guidance counselors, school psychologists. We might want to, we might want to train those folks more in-depth for that piece. And it is about getting your families involved, but it, through the school.
I just wasn't sure if it was like a, like a family night where they, you know, teaching the, you know, math curriculum, or something like that, you bring the families in or what? I was just curious.
We haven't, I haven't heard that one yet, but I mean, that, that's a possibility that you want to talk to, about this, because it would be a culture, culture change, which is one of the things that we want to keep having conversation.
Have we looked at any, what do they call it? Teach the trainer, or, you know, where they train a trainer to come in? And have we checked with, I think Pottstown School District has a, Train the Trainees, I, I don't know what you call it, where they have a staff person that trains their staff? Is it something we could work with them on, or, I don't know?
Well, some of the districts that we've been talking to, I think one of the things that they feel the most positive about is using Restor, the Restorative Practices Institute to do the initial training with a lion's share of the staff to really get this, it solid and get it in-depth and get it going. And we were having some conversation just among our cabinet, but again, we haven't gone to our, our teacher leaders, which is, we feel is really important, about having them set up periodically to come in and getting groups of cohorts of people through the training. But in, in the long haul, we would like to get some people as trainers of trainers. But I mean, I talked to, we talked to one principal, and he said he's a trainer of trainer along with some of his, a couple of his teachers, but still, they felt like the institute was the best way to get the initial training, to get, to really get the, a solid understanding of it with their trainers that do this for a living, and then have some of our trainers continue to keep it going, and then also put that then into our induction program for new staff, so that you have that coming back.
You're getting that feedback from other districts, correct?
Correct. From districts themselves, from principals, superintendents, different administrators that have been working with this for a while. And I, I think the one that we felt, it was really good to have a conversation with, was a superintendent now in the Bethlehem School District, who also was a principal in the Springfield School District. So he's done this twice, because he did it as a principal in his district, but now in, as a superintendent, they're doing the same thing. And to hear him, because he was involved in the institute way back, before they had that whole school change effort and all of that stuff that costs lots and lots of money. And he was suggesting that it's really focusing on these two front-end trainings, you know, with a wide spread of your staff to get kind of the thought process ingrained in the culture, and then you can continue it through some trainer of trainers.
Well, the reason I asked that question is because when, when you first presented this to us two meetings ago, it, the recommendation to go down that road was coming from the institute itself. And I, I, I don't want to suggest that there was any self-interest in that, but that was, of course, that, that, of course, ran through my head. But so hearing that, that, that recommendation not only came from the institute, but also from the, the districts that are using it, I think, gives it more credibility. From my perspective, anyway. So. Anybody else? All right. We're going to move on to action items. Wait, did I skip something?
Yeah, you skipped. There's, there's one more, the, the board calendar, I think is still under discussion. And, I'm sorry. I asked Lori to put together a draft on a calendar view, so you could kind of see it. The one thing that stuck out to me that you want to, might want to think about is, in October, you have a board meeting scheduled on Yom Kippur, and I wasn't sure if that would be problematic. And I thought there might be one more. Mark will get, Mark will get to miss, but.
Well, it wouldn't be problematic for me, but, but it certainly might be for us, any staff, or, and, and our solicitor as well. So it, would it be, I mean, I realize that we'd be doing meetings two weeks in a row, but, but I'd looked at the calendar, and I thought, why not just push it to the fourth and not have a meeting on Yom Kippur? You know, you know, in a previous day, when I wasn't even on the board, we had a mistake in scheduling of an event on Yom Kippur, and I stood up and said, well, you know, it's not fair at this late hour to take it away from the students. But, but in this case, where we actually have control over the scheduling, Yom Kippur is the high holy day in Judaism, and, and you are not supposed to work, period. You know, so for that reason, and in, in support of our Jewish families and, and Jewish staff, I think it would be wise to switch, if possible. Does, does anybody else object with, just, that would mean we'd have a meeting two weeks in a row, instead of every other week. So maybe that one would be a shorter meeting, which would certainly be attractive to everybody. Any objection to, to, to making that change? Thank you.
The other one, oh, I'm sorry. The other one that might be problematic is November 8th.
Election Day. I was going to say that one.
I, we just put them on where they typically fall and wanted to leave it up for your discussion.
Is it possible that they could be using the school? By November? I know, I just heard rumblings about them requesting to use the school, because it was getting overcrowded, but that would be an upper for the middle school, so when, that part wouldn't affect, but it was still probably, that's prime time, right after work, up until 8 o'clock.
I guess that one didn't bother me as much, because obviously, we wouldn't schedule at the middle school if this middle school is going to be used, which we still don't even know at this point, whether the county is going to agree to the change. I think they should. You know, and school is still open on that date, correct?
I believe so. And if, if it were to be used, then we would come back with a recommendation to move our professional development to that day, because it's really, we feel it's problematic to have the school open. The parking would just be prob, very problematic and a safety issue. And it would, it would just be better, I think, to have the staff development day on that day.
Okay. What?
He's saying move this down, one and move that down, too.
Can, nobody can hear you, Al.
Suggestion would be to move from the 8th to the 15th, and then move the athletics and curriculum to the 29th. You don't want it, I wouldn't prefer to have it on Thanksgiving week.
I'm okay that, with that, if the rest of you are. Okay? And then, do we have any conflicts with the election day in the spring? I don't even know what that day is, to be honest, but. We could always adjust later.
Yeah.
We'll worry about the spring in the fall. And so, do you, do we need to adopt this?
At some point, I'm, I can wait until August, but it might be better to publish it sooner than.
All right. Well, I'll make a motion to adopt the calendar with the revisions that we've, that we've suggested. Can I get a second?
I have, do have a question. Is this the right time to adopt to do it? Just on the.
Do you want to make another change?
Well, I was just curious.
I'll belay my motion.
In December, on the 13th, there would have been a curriculum meeting, but there's nothing scheduled. I wasn't sure why. I didn't know if there was a particular reason or what, that's all.
Well, usually, when we try to schedule meetings in December, it becomes very difficult, because there's so many concerts and, you know, those kind of things.
Rick, I would, I would ask you to consider, actually try to find out what May's primary is, because that happens the fall, I don't know when it exactly is, but the reason why I'm saying that is, that's a primary for the school board. So there's going to be four of you guys actually going to have to be there, I would think, and making a meeting may be a little difficult.
Well, you know, assuming I want to put myself through this torture for another four years, they, the, the point is noted, but I think we could deal with it in the fall. In fact, we need to deal with it after we know for sure that they're moving the polling stations, because that also affects our school calendar if we're doing that, not just our board calendar. So let's just for now adopt this as it is, and, and we can adjust the board calendar in plenty of time, should we need to. Is everybody okay with that?
Mr. Rabinowitz?
Yes.
May, May 16th will be the primary.
Oh, thank you for your computer. May 16th, and we do not have a board meeting scheduled for May 16th. We have curriculum and athletics, we might want to look at that, but, okay. Thank you, Mr. Nestor. I made a motion to adopt the calendar. Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, nine, nothing. Moving on.
I'm recommending that you approve the administrative appointment as presented.
Motion to.
Mr. Cantor.
To approve the hiring of Mr. Cantor. Can I get a second? I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions? I have a comment, but I wanted to wait for everybody else. Well, then, what I would say is that I had the opportunity to participate in both rounds of the interviews with Mr. Cantor, and if we haven't scared him away of, from the earlier part of this meeting, I would just say that, that I could not have been more impressed with, with this gentleman. He is going to be a huge asset to this school district. I don't believe I've ever been so confident in, in a hire. So, and, and I would also say that, that it wasn't just me who felt that way, it was everybody who participated in the interview team. And so I wanted to thank the administration for allowing me to participate in the process. It was very educational for me from a number of perspectives, and, and useful to me as a person who has to then make the decision as to whether to approve the hire or not. So for all those reasons, I would just wanted to let everybody know how enthusiastic I personally am about this particular hire, and I wanted to know if anybody else had any other questions.
Just a comment, I'll be abstaining. I haven't met him, interviewed him, or anything.
Fair enough. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And one abstention. Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve all remaining personnel items as presented. I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
Just a question in regards, well, if I could just ask the question now, I don't know, I hate to pull him out, but if we did exit interviews with the staff, and if that, I don't know if we can hear the results here, but if we can get the results somehow, some way.
For what?
Yeah, Mr. Parker, we, for the staff that's exiting, retiring, we, that's, that's part of their exit packet, that they schedule, they schedule, if they so choose, to schedule an exit interview with me, and then I keep those results that, you know, can be, can be looked at.
I was talking more about the resignations.
Yeah.
Also have a question on 11.40. Want me to just ask it now, Mr. Rabinowitz? Okay. Are we looking at, I had a conversation with somebody the other day, it's something I've heard on and off through the years. Do we look at our current subs? I guess there is a lot of discouragement amongst staff and concern, well, we're losing subs because we don't consider them for, you know, LTS positions or, or permanent positions. Do we give them serious consideration, those that have been dedicated to the district?
Mr. Parker, one of the things that I, I feel we've done in the two and a half years that I've been here, is we, we take a look at all of our staff, our substitute staff, because they start with me, as you know. You know, they, they start with me, and then that gives them an opportunity to matriculate into a, a long-term sub, or long-term per daily, per diem sub. And over the last two, you know, two years, we have used our pool, our resources of teachers, because we feel, and our principals feel, that they have 90 days, 120 days of observation. So it, it really gives us a good opportunity to get to know somebody, how they deal, obviously, first with children, with parents, with administrators, with the, with the different directors that we have. So, you know, I can say with great confidence that we have hired LTSs, we have hired from our subpool in the last two years, and we feel we have grown that capacity internally, and feel that, you know, moving forward, and you can see some of the appointments of where they, what they've done in the past, that they, they've come from internal, you know, observations and scrutiny, and we feel really good about that, that we're a place that will take interest in the substitutes, as well as long-term subs for permanent contracted positions.
Good to hear. Thank you. That's all I had for personnel.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, nine, nothing. I guess I'll just take it.
Oh, I can do it.
No, 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 no. Yeah. All right. Well, we're up to the budget. So, you know, this should be the easy part of the meeting. But the administration has recommended a budget with a 0% tax increase, and I myself have reviewed the budget documents. I'm not really sure, I've, I've never sat in this chair and managed the budget before, so pardon my somewhat uncertainty about how to proceed. Rather than ask for a motion yet, I thought it would be a good idea maybe to, to hear from some of the board about what's been presented. I know there were a couple of pending questions. I have a pending question myself. My pending question is, is, is there a way to turn a 0% budget into a, a tax-decrease budget? I recognize, having heard from Mr. Nestor and that, and others, that, that there might be some concern with doing that. And then there was also the question of how to do that. When I looked through the budget, I had a couple of questions for you, Mr. Nestor, just to make sure I understood it properly. This budget as presented does have us buying three buses. Is that true? So, and can you tell me, and I've only asked you to do this every year, what, how many dollars is equal to a quarter percent?
Quarter percent? A percent is $378,000.
Okay. So do that math for me.
About 90.
90,000?
Little bit more.
Approximately one bus?
Yes.
Within $10,000?
Yes. However, that being said, as I presented before, we have a, a fleet of 40 to 50 vehicles, and we schedule to replace three of them every year, so that we don't have any spikes in, in the budget. Certainly, we can defer one, but it will need to be replaced next year, along with the three that we have proposed for next year.
Or we could purchase it out of capital funds as well.
Or we could purchase it out of capital funds.
Right. So what I personally would like to suggest to the rest of you is that we purchase the third bus out of capital funds, so that we don't get behind in our schedule, and that we. and that we do a quarter percent tax cut. I felt very strongly two years ago that we were hasty in raising taxes at the 0.55% of that time, and I think it's, it's testimony to Mr. Nestor and to the rest of the administration that we're in a position where we could even be talking about something like this. But, but I remain concerned about our relatively high tax rate compared with our neighboring districts. All of them, from what I can tell, are doing relatively small tax increases, if at all. And, 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 and I, I think that, I had this discussion with, with Bob in the parking lot, when it comes to our millage rate, for lack of a better term, I'm a supply sider. I think that the, the small reduction will pay for itself, or partially pay for itself, in improved economy. I can't prove it, it's too small, we don't have the resources to study it. We do have, we do have indications that our economy is improving, and revenues are increasing, and, and I just want to do everything we can to keep our economy competitive, because that is going to bring in more revenue than any tax increase ever could. And so that's, I, I'm not making a motion yet, I'm just suggesting it and, and putting it out on the floor for the rest of the board. My other, my other question for the board is one that we previously discussed, which was the unfilled coach position. We have had discussion about it before, and we need to make a decision whether we're going to fund that position, cut that position, or re-distribute, or, or make the funds available for another position. And Mrs. Fiola, I spoke with you, and I also spoke about this at, at another board meeting as well. I personally believe we have a pressing need in our pupil services area. I spoke with you about it, and, and you said that if that was the will of the board, you would want to take some time to formulate your needs, not just necessarily in pupil services, and rather have the board dictate what those needs are, have you come back to us as an alternative. So, we have three choices here. We just stick with the budget as it is and fill the coach position with, I believe, an internal resource that has been selected. We, we don't do that, but instead fund another administration position with a focus on pupil services, or we cut the position, which would, of course, fund the tax cut rather than, than messing with the buses, assuming that people wanted to have that. So those are the things that were on my mind about the budget, and now I'm going to shut up and let the rest of you give your thoughts.
I thank you for the discussion. I think that's, it's good that we consider this. We talked a little bit earlier about, you know, giving different direction to the board, and, you know, maybe not speaking all as one, and I think this would be a great opportunity for us to say, we gave you direction to give us a budget with no increase, you've done that. I say we say thank you very much, and we pass the budget. In terms of the staff position, whether we hire the coach or we hire the pupil services person, I say we fund the position by keeping the budget as it is, and then we, we can take under advisement, you know, when you're ready to present to us your recommendation and what you think is the right answer, what you think we ought to do. And I think tonight would be a chance for us to say, we, as nine folks said, we want a budget with no increase, they gave that to us, thank you very much. We've done something good for the community. That's my thought.
I just had a question in regards, and I, I, this may have been discussed already, that I just forget it. Did we decide on what to do with the 1.5 some odd million in the health fund that our auditor told us to take out?
That has not been discussed at this point. My recommendation, for what it's worth, certainly you guys can ultimately decide what the use is, but Mr. Cardwell presented to you a 10-year capital plan of $15 million, of which we have six. And we also recently have heard of the potential of some new housing coming into the area that may impact building capacity at some point down the road. So if we were to decide to move the money, my recommendation would be to move it to capital reserve. It would help us either fund our capital plan or allow us to prepare for any additional building changes that we may need to, to make going forward.
Capital reserve, I'm correct, that cannot be changed once it's done. Is that correct? But the money that's in Peasars, the money that we're using, that, that can be moved.
There, once it's in capital reserve, it's a, it's a board, a, an action that the board took to physically transfer the money. At that point, it needs to be used for either building improvements, facility improvements, or for repayment of debt service. Okay? Repayment of debt service is a general fund expenditure for the most part. So in theory, you could use some of that money to pay debt service as well. The Peasars' reserve is money we've set aside to defray the impact of rising retirement contributions. That's a commitment that the board made, it, money stays in general fund. If the board would choose to decommit the money, it could be used for whatever the, the school board wishes to use it for. That being said, we have a plan on how we're going to use that, that money to keep our increases low. We're using $900,000 of that this year, and that's how we've achieved a 0% tax increase. If we decommit that money and use it for some other purpose, we're going to have the increase in Peasars that we have to...
But it gives us more options.
It does give you more options.
All right, then I would ask the board to consider and discuss possibly using some of the money to buy the bus, to help us keep on track, allow the administration the time to use whatever funds they necessarily want to, for which position they feel is best, and then remove the remaining money and put it into a Peasars account, only because it gives us more options, which we could then, if we see we have a roof issue, we could still just move right over to capital as needed.
My, my only concern with that, and if that's what you want to do, I would suggest we get some input from our auditors, because we can't commit more than is reasonably expected to be used for something as well. So if that makes it, you know, if our, if our increases aren't going to be that large over the next 10 years, it may be exorbitant.
Al, it was my intention to, to motion tonight to, to move that million and a half into capital reserve, based on the recommendation of the administration and the 10-year plan, and the fact that, that there's just no doubt we're going to need that money for capital. So I, I don't feel, and, and by the way, there is an easy way to work around the committed nature of that fund. You could always use capital reserves to pay, to make interest payments, which are generally, are currently in the general fund budget. So, I mean, I don't think we should do that. I'm, I'm just saying that, that, that your hands are tied, but, you know, not completely. And so what I would say is, I was right with you on, on everything right up to that point, but I, but I do think that we should move it into the capital reserve. There's more than enough things on the plate based on what we've seen from Mr. Cardwell and from facilities. And so that would be my personal recommendation. But were you saying then that you would be in support of, of the quarter percent tax cut?
Yeah, I'd be in percent. I would like to see maybe 1.4 moved, and 100,000 to buy the bus.
Well, yeah, well, exactly, to cover those costs. And you did remind me, actually, there was a question I had, Mr. Nestor. You also have somewhere in here a recommendation to, again, put some more money into the new reserve that we created for increases in the, in the Western Center budget. And I was trying to look at it today when board docs went bluey, and so I didn't really get a chance to view it. So pardon me if it was clear in the documents you provided. There was an increase in that budget this year, correct? It was like 30-something thousand dollars?
Yes, it was mid-30s. I don't, I don't have the exact number.
Did we draw the funds for that from our, from the reserve?
We did not, because it was a relatively small number. I'm anticipating, historically, there have been higher-than-index increases in the Western Center budget year to year. This year, due to a slightly lower pupil participation from Potts Grove, our increase wasn't as large as some of the other, other districts.
Well, philosophically, I guess, if we're going to create, if we created a reserve for the purpose of, of, of handling increases, even if it is only 30-something thousand dollars, then in my mind, we might as well...
It certainly, it certainly can be...
...fund that from that reserve, particularly when we're going to be adding to the reserve again with another surplus this year, to the tune of 100-something thousand dollars. So that also gives us a little bit more flexibility from a budgetary perspective as, without even touching the buses. I mean, 30,000 is, I don't know what percentage it is, but I'm not suggesting that we do any more than a quarter percent. I don't want to be, I, I don't, I, I, I think that would be an error, but, but I don't, I do think we should fund that out of the reserve that we created last year. Is everybody following that, especially the new board members who weren't around when we created this reserve? It was specifically to cover the costs of Western Center cost increases. So 30,000 increase, we have a reserve from last year, I think we should use that portion of it. We still have how much in that reserve, if we use the 30,000 roughly?
We had 229 from last year, plus what's, what's being added this year.
So, then we would only need to fund, we, we, we could pay for only part of the bus out of capital reserves, if we did that, I guess is what I'm saying.
I, I don't want to argue the point, I just want to give you facts.
Facts are good.
The stars aligned this year, and we were able to get a zero. I can't guarantee that stars are going to align next year. And I think it would be short-sighted to do even a small decrease this year, and then have to go to a larger increase next year as a result. I think zero is a utopia in my world. I haven't seen it in 15 years. I'd like to see it again before I retire, but who knows? So I, I would, I would advise against. I understand your reasons for doing it, but I think in the long run, nobody's going to remember a quarter percent decrease, but they'll remember a, a larger increase next year.
That is the risk. You're right. You know, I will only point out that in the past, school boards, and I, I sat in the audience and watched this school board make tackin, tax increases defensively out of concern for what might happen in the future. And while I understand the rationale, you know, and I agree that zero is shangri-la, but, and, you know, what we've been driving towards, and, and again, I applaud you and, and Mrs. Fiola and the rest of the administration to get us to that point. So, you know, I guess, I'm greedy on behalf of the, the many seniors who are struggling to keep their houses. And though it's a small amount of money, I think that the symbolism is, does matter, and, and, and the real dollars do matter to people. And so, with all due respect, my mind isn't changed, but it takes nine of us, or five of us, to decide on this. This is one of those, you need five for the vote, I believe. So, does anybody else have any thoughts on this? Otherwise, I'm about ready to make a motion. Sure.
I just, I just want to thank everybody, Shelley and Dave. Your team has worked so hard and, and really have brought the district together for the 0%. So, you know, there was a lot of work that all your departments did, so I, I thank you.
Couple of comments. I stand with Rick and Bob and Patty in thanking the rest of the board and uniting to give direction in this area, and a thank you to Shelley and Dave and your departments in making it happen for the 0%. In regards to the, what to do with the money for the coach position, I agree with what Bob suggested. Keep it put aside, don't fill that position, and let's see what Ms. Fiola brings back as a suggestion for that. Regards to the health money going to capital, I agree with that. I still do not like the, the bus plan, although I typically prefer to be proactive versus reactive, which is exactly what that plan is, and I appreciate that. I'm just not sure that's the best way to use the money, but that's just my own thought. And last but not least, just a question. I'm concerned about taking 900,000 from the Peasars' reserve. What is that going to do to us in the future, and are we going to end up paying for it later?
Now, we, we have a plan, a well-thought-out plan, where the use of it will be dropped off year over year over year, so that at the end of eight years approximately, we'll have factored in all the use of that money, so that there'll be no increase of any significance in any one year for the foreseeable future. I want to avoid the precipitous drop-off, and that's why I suggested not taking the money out of the Peasars' reserve in any given year for, to fund a budget, because that would reduce the length of time we can spread it out and the, have a more significant impact in any one year. So I, I, I can provide you with another copy of the plan, but it is, it is well-thought-out, and it has minimal impact on any given year.
So this won't hurt us?
It will not hurt us.
Okay, thank you.
Would add that, sorry, Diane. I would add that according to that plan, you know, over the last couple of years, we've actually not even used, because we've had surpluses, we had planned to, to, we, we had planned deficits that turned into surpluses, so we didn't draw from the Peasars' fund. So we're, I believe we're ahead of the plan as a result of that. So I, I think it's in very good shape, and there's quite a few million dollars in the, in that fund for this specific purpose. So hopefully, we'll get to this time next year, or sometime next year, and, and once again, we'll have a surprise surplus, and we won't need to commit the funds again, because that keeps us in the strongest possible financial position. So, Diane, I'm sorry I interrupted you.
That's okay. I echo Dave's sentiment about the zero tax incre, uh, tax, zero tax increase. I don't remember the last time that's happened. It might have been when the taxpayer alliance controlled the board, so I'm happy with that. And I'd rather just see us say thank you very much and carry on with Dave's recommendations. That's my thought.
I have a question with regards to using the money for another pupil services. Does that have to be decided how? That does not have to be decided tonight at all, though, correct?
I think what people are suggesting is we leave it to the administration to decide. We keep the, we keep the funding in place, and, you know, they need to decide what's most important. You know, it's, either, either choice is robbing Peter to pay Paul, so they just have to decide which, which side they want to rob. Maybe they'll go with the original plan, or not, but... And Ms. Fiola points out that administrator would cost more money than a coach, potentially, so, but I wouldn't think that it would be significantly more money. I guess it would depend on the level.
Depends on the level.
Right, right. So that would be, I, I also want to point out, though, even if that's the case, and they decided they wanted to go with the administrator, and that might put us in a deficit situation, as I've said before, personally, I'm comfortable with a, a budget that has a deficit of, you know, 50,000 or less, because, because things generally work out more favorably when, when push comes to shove, especially in a good economy. So that wouldn't really concern me so much. We also have plenty of reserves in the worst-case scenario, though we would prefer not to do that. So I would still want to leave it to you, I guess is what I'm saying, even if we're funding it at the coach level, because, because my concern about the pupil services thing, not to, not to belabor the point, is that, is that mistakes in this area can cost way more than the cost... is that, is that mistakes in this area can cost way more than the cost of the position. And, and good work in this area can, can save money well in advance, in, in excess of the cost of the position. So, that's never been clearer to me, having participated in these, in these interviews, and having also been a consumer of special education services over the years. They're very costly, we know, we get these recommendations to, to place a student in a facility, in an alternate education environment, and we're asked to spend three hundred thousand dollars or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And everything we do that, that, that keeps that student here, if it's appropriate, or, uh, or, or prevents us from being exposed to a costly lawsuit because we're doing all the work necessary, and we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's in this area, and we're not letting balls drop because we're overworked, and there's too much to do. For all those reasons, I personally think it's worth considering, and that's all I'm saying, is that it's worth considering, because, because it's the only area where we could fund a position and get an ROI. You know, a, an actual return on investment that could be demonstrated by reductions in costs or, or not increases in costs. So that's my perspective on it. Again, I'm not trying to tell the administration what to do, I'm not, I actually am trying not to do that. I'm just strongly suggesting it be thought of, because the alternative might be, you know, our, our budget going up next year because of increases in pupil services specifically, even though, and possibly because we didn't do that. So, enough on that. Anybody else with comments or questions?
I think I'm the last one. I'm all for the zero, obviously. I don't personally see the need to push the envelope and try to get a negative. I think zero is fantastic, and thank you, everybody, for getting us there. As for the coach versus pupil services, I'm just gonna throw another thing in there. I, I know the high school is in desperate need of another history teacher, another social studies teacher, and so maybe if that could be thrown into the mix and looked at, they've been in need of that for quite some time, and they've gone down quite a bit. They've from a couple, you know, like fifteen years ago, they had, I don't know, I can't remember the exact numbers, but they had like three more than they do now, and now they're down to what, six? Eight? Yeah, and, um, and, and they're, you know, they've got more kids, they've got more classes, so, just a thought.
You weren't last. You weren't last. That's okay. So, on the, on the tax cut, I guess, my, my perspective is we need a Rick to always drive down, down, down. I think that's, uh, we, we need to have that constant voice. For me, I'm, I am happy with the, with the zero percent, and what I would say is if there was some savings that we, we hadn't realized, that would put us in the realm of having a tax cut, then I would be, I would be fully supportive of that for the, for the, the way we're going about it to, to kinda move things here and, and there. I, I understand that, too. That's just for me not as appealing. I think I said the same thing last year, 'cause we were looking at doing something like that. On the buses, we did cut a bus last year, I believe, or was it? Right. So, that's not really sustainable. I mean, I guess if that was the only thing out of capital, it would be sustainable for a while, but it's, it's really not. And if you look at the, you know, three buses a year, forty-five vehicles, that's fifteen years. If you cut it to back to two, if we realistically cut it back to two, then you're at like twenty-two and a half or twenty-three years per vehicle, which probably isn't doable without a bunch of extra maintenance. So, I'll, I mean, my opinion is, we did a great job at getting to zero with, and I'll say surprisingly, very little work on the part of the board. It just seems, it seemed to happen without, and I think it's because we've been getting everybody on the same page for, for a few years now that we wanna go in that direction. I, I think it's something to be proud of, especially on the part of the administration who did a lot of the work, and, and Rick, too, who pushed so hard nonstop to get us there. But I'm okay with the zero percent, just because I, like I said, I'd be, be more enthusiastic about it if there was an actual savings we hadn't realized that would cut us by, by an extra quarter.
I'm gonna make, obviously, one more person to make one last comment. I'm never gonna be a person, as, as long as I'm here, that if I have a goal and I get to that goal, that I don't say, hey, can I go a little farther? So if I get to the zero percent, which I thank everybody for all the hard work of getting there, and I see that opportunity to get us just a smidge better, I'm always going to do whatever I can do to get that smidge better. And if that means that I take a hundred thousand dollars from money that's sitting over here and not used at all, and we could just take out one point, we won't, that we just have, it's just sitting there. And we could take one point four million of that, put it to our capital gain plan, and use that hundred thousand dollars even as a symbol of we went above and beyond what we were asked to do. That is how I live, it's just always gonna be how I go. I'm always gonna try to go that extra mile if it can be done.
I'm doing some math here. Eighty thousand, right, is the cost of a bus.
While you're thinking that, I just wanna interject. I thought it was great how you were motioning that the money was right there on your desk, next to you.
Again, the actual net cost to capital reserves for what I'm suggesting would be forty-eight thousand dollars, because thirty-two thousand dollars would come from, if it's thirty-two, if I have that number right, Mr. Nestor, would be funding the increase in the Western Center budget using the reserve that was created for that sole purpose. That's essentially doing the same thing as we do with Peasars, and still committing way more than that for future increases. So the net cost to capital reserves would be forty-eight, not eighty. I'd be fine with making it a deficit, but, but I know that gives people, uh, agita, to use a word I hear in my house a lot. So, um, I, it looks like it's a close vote. I'm, I'm just gonna make the motion. I'm gonna make a motion to, to fund the budget with a quarter percent tax increase, decrease, pardon me. I can't believe I just said that. With a quarter percent tax decrease, and fund that by, by using the reserve to cover the increase in the Western Center budget. And paying for the remainder of one bus out of capital reserves will deal with the movement of money into capital reserves in a separate motion. Do, do, do I need to say anything else in this motion to, to make it work? Well, I have, you know-
I'll second it.
We have a motion and we have a second. Okay. We trust you. So we have a motion and a second. Are there any additional comments or questions before we vote on this, knowing that it might not pass?
Yes, there is. Just gonna say this one more time. We often say that we don't know all of the stuff that hap-, all of the things that happen behind the scenes of what the administrators do. We gave them this direction, and they've worked to do it. I don't know how many requests came in from the buildings, from the principals, from the teachers, from the staff, for additional stuff they need, for additional items that they need to do their work, and they were probably told on a number of occasions, we're getting to zero this year. You can't have it this year. You're gonna have to wait a year. You're gonna have to wait till next year, okay? So they met everything we did, and now we're gonna reward them by saying, we want more. We wanna squeeze some more blood out of the stone. I, I, I don't know that that happened, but I'm a betting man, and I bet it did, on more than one occasion. And that's why I think it's a nice gesture, it's a great gesture, it's a well thought out gesture, but I think it's moving the goalposts. And I think that we need to give a gesture to our administration right now, and say thank you for what you did, we recognize it, and we appreciate it.
Well, you know what, I agree with you, and, and I disagree with you at the same time. I, I mean, I certainly agree that the administration has done what we asked, and I applaud that. But, but I'm more concerned right now about a gesture to the community than I am about, about a gesture to, to anybody else. We are the fourth highest, thank God now, not the fourth highest, instead of the third highest taxed community in Montgomery County. All of our neighbors have significantly lower taxes. I don't mean to, to beat this horse dead, but, but it beats us dead, day after day after day. People can't sell their homes because, because people are moving into other school districts. Seniors can't, can barely keep up, and I just feel that we have an opportunity, we may never have it again. And so, I'm going for it. I've got a motion and a second, and it's either gonna pass, and if, or it's not. If it doesn't pass, then well, we know what we're gonna do next, so. Al?
I like to say, and I agree, a hundred percent, the administration has done everything possible to get to this point, and they probably have taken some of the requests and said, look, not this year. The idea of the motion, though, is not taking one extra dollar from that goal of what they did. They did their goal. We're taking money from money that we already have, that's available, that's sitting, that's not going to be used next year. We have a fund that's going to replenish the capital gain possibly, if, if, if a motion is held. And so we're not changing anything on the ideas of next year, you're going to not have to do this again. We're not moving the goalposts, we're simply just making it go sideways a little.
I've changed my vote about five times every time somebody comments. Each person makes an excellent point. Ms. Fiola, Mr. Nestor, can you comment on the points that have been made that might help give clarification? Just your thoughts of the-
Well, I'll, I'll comment and say that Mr. Lindgren is, is accurate in his assertion that, you know, we had to have people trim and cut and pull back, because otherwise, how would we get where we are? I mean, obviously, Dave did a nice job in, in working with the monies that we have, but there were things that were cut from, from buildings and administrator department requests and so on to get us to where we are, so.
Well, we have a motion and a second. Oh, Dave, sorry.
I, I think I said my opinion before, so, I mean, um, can we do, can we do what's requested? Yes. I think, I think it's a, it's a dangerous precedent that we may come to regret in the future. But certainly, we can do it if that's what the board's wishes are.
It's time to vote. Should we do a roll call? That's fine.
Mr. Leach?
Yes.
Mr. Lindgren?
No.
Ms. Grimm?
No.
Mr. Alexander?
No.
I'll save the officer, I already got the officer. Mr. Rabenowitz?
Obviously, yes.
Ms. Cherico? Mr. Parker?
No.
Mr. Lappick? And Ms. Custer? Motion fails.
I'll make another motion for a zero percent tax increase.
I'll second that motion.
With, I still want us to use the thirty-two thousand dollars to cover the cost of the increase in the Western Center, and make that our standard operating procedure, to use the reserve that we created, particularly in situations where we're adding to the reserve, like we will be in another motion. And, um, let the administration decide what they wanna do on the, the position that we discussed. So we have a motion and a second. Do we need to discuss it again? Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing.
That saves a lot of work. Thank you.
You're welcome.
How many of the Section twelve items can we roll into a single motion, sir?
I'll make it now. Rick, I'll make the motion now. It's gonna be motion to approve business items five, six, eight through ten, fifteen, seventeen through twenty-seven.
We haven't done-
Right, we haven't done two, three, and four, which they're gonna wanna talk about.
Okay.
Oh, I have to wait. I have to wait.
Next is the real estate levy, right? Is, is there specific language here that we, we need to use, Mr. Nestor? Okay, I'll make the motion that's there. Got a motion and a second. We already pretty much decided this with the first one, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And Mrs. Grimm voted yes in, in abstention. And moving on. Two. What's next?
Homestead and farmsteads.
Homestead and farmsteads.
I make a motion that we approve the homestead and farmstead exceptions as presented.
Second. Al was second. Motion and a second, any comments, questions?
Just a question, minor question. Is it, do we have control of that form? Is it possible to put on that form, when, that goes to the homeowners, that says that they got the home state or farm state exclusion? Because I, I don't think it currently tells them that.
On, on your tax bill, it will, it will indicate a reduction in your assessed value for your homestead exclusion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing. Next is taxes and per cap-
Motion to approve the Act five eleven taxes and per capita taxes as presented.
Motion and a second, any questions or comments?
Yeah, my one question is about the, I guess like five dollars per person, the one everybody calls nuisance tax. What do we actually get from that? What's the net?
Zero percent tax increase.
Well, what's the net, though?
That's what we get.
Five dollars. That's about fifty thousand dollars. Okay, done.
One of the problems, if you do away with it, you may, it may be an unintended consequence that the local municipality can then pick up the difference. So sometimes, what you think you're doing in favor of the taxpayers, all you're doing is pushing, I don't know, pushing, but you're, you're giving up money that somebody else is gonna take.
All right, we have, do we, we have a motion and a second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries eight, nothing.
Fifteen, seventeen through twenty-seven, and twenty-nine through thirty-two as presented. Second. Five, six, eight through ten, fifteen, seventeen through twenty-seven, and twenty-nine through thirty-two. Excellent.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions on Al's mega motion? I second. No comments or questions, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing. What's left?
Whoa, whoa, seven's first.
Does somebody on the Western Center Board wanna make this motion? Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing.
Make a motion to approve the 12-11.
12-11 fall athletic bid.
He motioned. So, at the risk of making this go on, this bid is, is to pay vendors?
To Market Street.
So, is it, is it funds that we're receiving from Market Street? That was my question.
No, it's for...
Oh, okay. It's for sports supplies.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing. What's left?
Motion to approve the motion as, I guess, motion as elected district sources.
I will second that and I have a comment. And the comment is that, that I've had a lot of reason lately to speak with our district solicitor. You know, in my first two years in the board, the only time I ever spoke with you, Mark, was when I was here at meetings. And, and I can tell you that working with you has been, been a, just a, a very big load off my mind to have you backing us up. And I'm very enthusiastic about the work you do for us and, and it's personally very much appreciated. So, with that in mind, are there any other comments or questions?
Yes. Do you want to be reappointed?
Well, yeah, I'll take another shot at it.
All right.
Thank you for your comments.
I don't think his coworkers would allow him to say no to that question, but even if he wanted to. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion.
Motion to approve 12-13 change orders of...
Ostrow place school project as submitted.
Motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions?
I have no trouble with them approving change orders as, you know, as they come up, up to 25,000. That's fine. I would like a record kept of what it is that they're approving and that report back out to the board. And any logical things that belong together, kept together. We don't break up a 75,000 thing to three 25,000 things, right? Okay, easy day.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing.
Motion to approve 12-14 fund balance as committed, as submitted.
Motion and a second. Dave, this doesn't affect what, what I asked to do with the, with the reserve out of the...
It's what we talked about.
Right. This is, this is the new funds going in, right? So, okay. Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing.
Motion to approve 12-16 athletic release as submitted.
Got a motion, can I have a second? Motion and a second. At the risk of, of extending our meeting, Mr. Wagman, I personally, I just wanna make sure I understand what we're doing here. This is just keeping one-to-one going?
Well, it's part of a four-year replacement cycle. So, as we retire, we have four leases, four large, larger leases. We have a very small lease for office equipment, office computers. But we have four large leases, which is all of our instructional technology. If one retires, we assess needs, target them where, you know, where they need to be, and then we, and then we pick up a new lease that keeps our inventory, you know, relevant, you know, up to date. In this particular case, the, we are, there is some one-to-one implications here. We are looking at dividing some classroom iPad labs for our elementary division and certainly, you know, maintaining our, our secondary deployment. There's also a small portion of the lease that is dealing specifically with classroom special education technologies. I believe that is mostly elementary. That, that is what comprises this lease.
Thank you, Mr. Wagman. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing.
Motion to approve 12.28, the Pottstown Area Health and Wellness Foundation grant acceptance as submitted.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing. Before we make the motion, Dr. Shirk, you did provide us a summary in board docs. It sort of disappeared on me this afternoon while I was trying to read through it, but as I understood it, the most significant change from the last time the committee saw this was the elimination of the minimum percent that a student would, the lowest grade that a student could get in the fourth quarter, whereas previously it was, in, in the previous draft, it was at 55%. In the fourth quarter, there is no bottom, well, zero would be the bottom, could theoretically, right? So, were there any other changes of significance? I looked through the document. I noticed that one when I read it, but I wanted to make sure I was aware.
Just the addition to the timeline for teachers to get information out, out to the families. That was, that was the addition. And the, the teachers felt strongly, both middle school and high school, that by, in the fourth marking, what they did not wanna see was if a student got passing grades in first, second marking period, third marking period, and the midterm, that was their four out of six, and then they would just pack it because they could, they could get 55 and 50, you know, in the final, and, and still statistically passed the course. So, they wanted, you know, skin in the game, so to speak. And I know, it's a lot, I know, it's a lot of thought. I, you know, as a student, I never thought, you know, it's, it's, it's an interesting thought process that, that some of our students have in how to beat the system. So, you know, obviously, if we, if they channeled energies other places, you know, maybe our scores would be higher throughout the land. But with that being said, the middle school staff, the high school felt, felt that, that what it does is it allows the students who try to play our system to take that, that play out, if you will. And then whatever grade earned, you know, we talk about, you know, you know, accountability for our students and our families, that that would be a way at the end of the game to make sure that they, all hands are on deck. So, that, that recommendation specifically came from, from the, from the teachers. And we, you know, I think, you know, the conversations we had with Daniel, myself, and Ms. Fiola, and the principals, that we felt that that was something we, we could live with and support.
Thank you, Dr. Shirk. Does, I'm gonna make the motion and then I guess we can have further discussion. Motion to approve the grading practices 13.1. Can I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions?
One quick comment. The entire curriculum committee discussed this, so multiple discussions, and each one of us agreed that we would give this a recommendation to the board, that we, that we would recommend approving the grading practice.
That is true. Mr. Parker, did you have something you wanted to say?
I just, you commented that you, the administration was comfortable with that. I don't know if you were talking about a certain part. The board and the committee gave a lot of input to this, which is great, but I wanna make sure the administration is comfortable with it from an educational standpoint.
Yeah, I, I really, I feel, you know, strongly that this was, this was a collaborative effort, Mr. Parker. You know, when you talk about the, the teachers being involved and the, the high school and middle school administrators were involved, as well as groups, specific leadership groups of the middle school and the high school, and then, and then individual high school teachers all had an opportunity, or middle school and, and high school teachers had an opportunity to weigh in. I think we, we touched all our bases. The only thing we really, we, we really failed to do in this, but I feel, you know, I think Brady helped us out with this, Brady Custer, and I, the social studies teacher, Mr. Clark, did some informal surveys in, in the classroom about the changes that were being made. We just, you know, we just wrapped this up June 6th, so we just really didn't have an opportunity to go out. But I think we could garner some feedback when we start in the fall to see, you know, because they'll have, they'll have an opportunity to look at what was and what is, what will be, to get some feedback from the students. But that, that's the only, the only area we didn't have an opportunity to do because we just, we were continually meeting and we ran out of time. We went to get a finished product, you know, to the board and do it timely so that we can roll this out in August to the teachers and, and the families.
That raised a question in my, my head and this is, you know, given that, that we've gotten buy-in from the teachers on this, and yet there's changes that the teachers are gonna have to have implemented and ready to go at the beginning of the year. Is a new administrative guideline document going to be created? Has it already been created? Where are you on that?
We're real close. After, after we get board approval tonight, then we can, we can finalize, finalize the implementation procedures and even get that out to them within, within the next couple days and then have, have that on our list of things to do when we start in service in, in August.
I guess my question, and, and, you know, it's not, if it's not feasible, it's not feasible, but it sure would be great if we could get it in their hands before they leave us so that they can, if they so choose, read through it so that it's not hitting them on their first day back. Obviously, there's, there's been buy-in, so it's not as concerning to me, but if it's possible, that would be great. So, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing.
Motion to approve all remaining education items as presented.
No, I'd wanna pull out the, the textbook one.
Rick, we approved those courses.
No, we didn't approve 13-2.
We approved the courses, but not the textbooks accompanying them.
I, I agree with you, Al, but I have my reasons for wanting to have some discussion, which will be evidenced shortly. So, you're right. 99% of this was, was pre-approved, but I had a question for the administration, particularly in relation to the gifted portion of, of this. I was under the impression, Mrs. Fiola, so, so correct me if I'm wrong, that, that there was gonna be additional curriculum work done over the summer between the eighth grade gifted English teacher and the person who's gonna be teaching the class on, on the curriculum. So, I guess I was a little surprised. Maybe I didn't, I missed something that you provided for us, that we weren't also looking at the books that were gonna be read as part of that process. I have a big issue with Go Ask Alice. I just do. I think it's inappropriate on multiple levels for instruction. I took the time today because I didn't want, want my own personal opinion to, to be uninformed. I read about 100 reviews of Go Ask Alice. A large majority of reviewers feel that, at best, it's inaccurate propaganda in relation to drugs. I'm all for educating our students on the dangers of drugs. I think it's important that we do so. But I feel very strongly that, that when you present students with propaganda, they laugh at you and don't, and, and feel you don't have any credibility. And, and if ever there was a book that fits that definition, it's Go Ask Alice. So, I respectfully ask that we not read that book and we find a substitute. You know, it, it's not the content that bothers me, although the content is pretty racy. It's, it's just the inaccuracy of the presentation. It was written in the early 1970s by, supposedly by, by a diary writer who, and edited by a woman, and I'm blanking on her name, but the woman who edited it did like eight other diaries that were written by, by also anonymous people, all that made social points. There's just so much evidence that, that it's an inauthentic book. It'd be like, to me, it would be like, you know, anybody who James Fry is, it would be like assigning the kids to read his book. And it's not even a very challenging book on top of that for, for a gifted class. It's really written on a very low level. So, for all those reasons, I would be happy to approve this, this entire recommendation if we simply struck Go Ask Alice and found a substitute. So, so that would be my motion. It was to approve this minus Go Ask Alice. Can I have a second?
Yeah, can I just, I just wanted to say, I was a little surprised by the, by the choices. I, I felt that if we're looking at gifted ELA and these books were young adult, but yet you look at the honors ninth grade class and they're reading Jane Eyre. It's not the most popular book, but it's not an easy book. And then, what else do they read? What, Great Expectations? Definitely not young adult books.
Well, the entire list has, of readings includes Don Quixote and, and, you know, the course starts with sort of young adult lighter fare and, and then increases over time. I wish it was more challenging from the start, to be perfectly honest, but, but we need to let our, our curriculum and, and English departments make that determination. I just personally have an objection to this one specific book because of the research I've done and my own personal knowledge. I mean, it's been commonly known about this book for 30 years, you know. So, I don't have a, I have a motion. Do I have a second? If I don't, then we'll move on.
Just, I'm gonna be abstaining. I'm sensitive to the novels we're choosing. I can't vote for something I haven't reviewed, which is my own fault for, for doing that. I don't blame anybody for that from past personal experiences. So, I probably would agree with what you, you just said, but I, you know, I haven't seen it, but I'll be abstaining since I'm not familiar with the books.
Well, it looks like my motion doesn't have a second. Bob?
No, I was not gonna second it. I was just going to say, we don't, again, what are the questions that we don't have answered? The question is, how are you gonna use this book? Is this book used as an example of use your critical thinking to explain why this book is propaganda and no good? You know, we don't know how it's gonna be used.
Well, we can't because the curriculum hasn't been written. So, so while we might write the curriculum around that idea, and I did think of that...
We are not writing the curriculum.
No.
We're not.
No. But we're approving it.
When I say that we're, we've gotta start somewhere with some expression of trust. We've gotta start somewhere with some expression of faith in the competence of our folks, that they're choosing books for a reason. I don't disagree with you on this one. Again, I, I would not have chosen any of these books, none of them, okay? But then again, I read Livian Polybius, so I'm, I'm an outlier, okay? I'm not the regular guy. So, I'm saying, this is what they're telling us that they need for the courses that we've told them we want them to teach. I say, go with them and approve the books as they have requested. So, that's my motion. So that's my motion.
Come in with a comment, or I'm not quite sure, it sounds we have two motions.
Al, yeah, we still...
We need a second.
Yeah, I mean, I remember reading Go Ask Alice back when I was in seventh grade, and it was, I mean, it, yeah, it was propaganda, definitely. At the one meeting, I think, it was explained to us that the books were chosen to give an exposure to different genres. But like you said, the curriculum's not been written yet, and so can, it's nineteen hundred dollars worth of books they're asking for. Can we vote on nineteen hundred, or two thousand dollars' worth of books, so that if during the summer they decide, you know what, maybe this book isn't really the best, but we found this one, and combined we store under the two thousand dollars? Can we do that to give them that freedom to opt out, but then still allow them the money to get the ones they want to get, so we're not suddenly August and, oh, we need books?
Are you modifying my motion?
I, I think I'm throwing in a whole new one, I really don't...
No, it would be a modification, I think, which I think I could live with, too, I might add. Well, since it hasn't been seconded, it doesn't need to be modified, right?
Let me be difficult.
Please.
You know, I've never been asked to read these two sections together, and so this is a first, this is a five oh eight, and that's the section that Rick referred to earlier that suggests that it requires a majority of the board as opposed to pull her out. You know, tonight we have a full complement, so the majority's going to be five. I hate to bring this up, but there's an obscure section of the school code that I've never had to interpret, eight oh three.
That's the one that says, don't read Go Ask Alice?
What it says, interesting the way I read it, it's convoluted, and there's no cases on it. It says that you have to adopt textbooks between August, April and August, which were fine. And then it suggests that the district superintendent makes the recommendations, and if the board isn't going to follow those, it takes a two-thirds vote. So I'm inferring this is a recommendation of the superintendent. So to change that recommendation, I believe, I'm sorry to do this, we need a two-thirds vote.
So what, what you're saying is that if we wanted to just...
I'm sorry, let me finish. I apologize. And Jim, it's not an issue of budgeting here, which normally your motion would be perfectly appropriate in any other case, but the code requires a list of textbooks, so... Yeah, which has been done here, as I understand it. That's why we do it this arcane way, because of the school code.
These are novels they're talking about, does it make a difference?
I think they're a textbook for the purposes of the school code.
Okay, but, so in order for your suggestion to be doable, which would be to authorize the spend without the, without, you said two-thirds vote.
What I view, what you have to do to get to your point is delete it tonight, and then have the administration come back in August with either, what's this book's name?
Go Ask Alice.
Go Ask whoever it is. And either come back with that book and say, we're going to use it this way, or an alternative, we found something we think will please you more, and we now recommend that.
Well, I think that's what Jim was suggesting, was, was...
I think he wanted to just budget the money, and then let them make a choice.
And you're saying we can't do that even with a two-thirds vote?
I think you need a list of textbooks.
All right, well... Mrs. Fiola, if we authorize these textbooks, and the administration decided upon further review to reconsider a book? That would be okay?
I guess so. I just, I guess I would caution the board that, you know, we, we put a committee of teachers together who have expertise in this area, and they worked for several days, and they discussed these choices, and they chose them for a reason, and they made this recommendation to me, and I, you know, I support their, I support their work.
But they chose them pre-curriculum to a certain extent, so...
They have themes, and they have their ideas in terms of what their focus is going to be, their essential questions, but they haven't fleshed out the detail in the course as you're, you know, you're correcting that, and that's what they're working on over the summer. But they wouldn't have been able to choose selections without, you know, broad-based ideas and outline, per se, and that's what they had worked on together. It wasn't just one teacher, the whole team of people were there, was there, so...
Okay, well, I didn't get a motion, a second for my motion, which was to strike the one textbook, which would have been legitimate based on what Mark said. So, so does somebody else want to make a motion? Because I'm voting no. We, we need to make a motion for this entire thing.
Make a motion that we approve the textbooks as presented, in the amount as presented, period.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? No? Motion carries seven, one, and an abstention.
We got, we got five.
Motion and a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing. We have a number of policies. No, these have been available for review. We have... I'm just going to make, well, actually, Matt, do you want to take this one?
I'll make the motion to approve the revised and new policies as they are listed.
Motion and a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.